And it was shared.
Thank you.
Multiple times.
Good, good evening and welcome to the work session for the mayor council for the city of Hagerstown. This is July ninth, twenty twenty four. This meeting is now called to order. And first up, we have new event discussion Latin festival. Brittany Arizmendi, our community engagement officer and Giovanni? Giovanni Diaz, event organizer.
Yes.
Did I mess that name up, Mr. Diaz?
Yes, you did.
No, you got it.
Oh, my God.
Yes, you did right.
Um, so good afternoon slash early evening. Um, I'm here before you today just to ask for the open container exemption. So, and then I will pass it off to Giovanni here in a second, just so he can share a little bit more about the event. Um, so this will be a new event for downtown. Uh, proposed date is Sunday, August twenty fifth. In University Plaza, so the open exemption would happen just like we do for all of our midweeks. Um, so that's why I'm here. And then if you just wanna give a brief overview of what you're planning to do.
Yes. And so we've been doing events with my brothers and my buddies for a long time. Uh, we do an event in Montgomery County Fairground for eighteen years. Um, with the Hispanic community, we're Hispanics, obviously. Um, the Hispanic community here is growing so much and we think it's about time to, for us to do something nice and engage with the community. Normally, we bring services for the community too. So each country, like in Montgomery County, we do, uh, we bring the embassies of like Mexico, Honduras, uh, Guatemala, uh, because our community needs services to, you know, that they requested. And they don't have to go to DC to get them. Um, the embassies normally they will willingly, they do that, uh, just to provide the services to their own community. So, um, that's the whole concept of it and music and food and the other things, right? But, uh, uh, you know, we organize pretty well and, you know, this would be the first one, but we hope to continue doing it during every year. Um, that's our goal.
I love it.
I love it too. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I went to an event in Montgomery County and I actually really enjoyed it. The music was sang in English and then right after in Spanish. And I felt that that was amazing and it was such a large amount of diverse people out there and to hear it in two different languages.
Yes.
It's really cool.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
You said food.
Yes.
Well, speaking of food, I, I would, I think it would be remiss of us not to recognize that Giovanni is working on a new restaurant downtown Sofri, Sofriedi?
Sofrito.
Sofrito.
Yeah, yeah.
Latin cuisine.
Yeah.
Puerto Rican cuisine, cuisine. So that's, uh, coming up soon.
It's coming up soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you too.
Pleasure to meet you.
Thank you.
I, I just have two questions.
Yes.
Um, the first is, so it says Sunday, August twenty fifth. And these are probably two dumb questions for all of the events, uh, at this specific location. But the first is, do we typically coordinate to determine if there is class in session?
At USMH?
Yeah, on that day.
We, I know everything goes through parts, so they have to submit an application. And then I think they, Amy and her staff may check with USMH. But we do, I know our, like, all the restrooms run through USMH when we utilize that building at sixty West Washington. So I'm sure if there ever was a conflict, that they would let us know. And I have a very close working relationship with Dr. Ashby over there and he's never voiced concerns. So I'm sure if that was a concern, that they would let us know.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that if there are classes, that there's adequate ability for, you know, uh, the entity to have its event as planned and that students who may be taking classes at the time are able to, uh, have ingress and egress to the facility without, you know, um, the two having to cross one another.
Yeah, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any conflicts. If you have heard differently, please let me know so we can take that into consideration. Yes, so far, so far, everything we have done, there hasn't been a conflict. And we, I know just for the city, we try to consciously schedule events when they're off, timing of the school year, and we try to keep that in mind.
Okay, the second question I have is, it says the applicant's name HD telecommunications, and then it says HD telecommunications will be the sole provider and server of alcohol sales. And again, this may be another dumb question, but, um, who does that include? Like, who are the servers? Like, how do you select those individuals? And are, are they required to be, you know, like TAM certified and things like that? Like, how does that process work?
Yes, is the answer to that. So the certification, HD telecommunications is Giovanni's business.
Okay.
And then he will have, so he has to go to the liquor board. So basically, all we do as the city, we ask, is it okay to have alcohol there? And then we do the application.
Right.
And then the person, so HD telecommunications in this situation, will then go to the liquor board. They will have to get what's called a one-day event license, and we have to do the same thing. So they get a one-day event license and then whomever is serving the alcohol, if they are serving it themselves, it has to be TAM certified. Or they, like, for midweek, we are working with Church Street Distillery and Smoke Town Brewery slash Hub City Brewery. So they have to be permitted and licensed through the liquor board and then they serve the alcohol. So as the license holder, we ID and give everyone wristbands. And then whoever's serving, they have to be TAM certified. It's a whole process. Um, but the liquor board, we, we have a good working relationship with them. So if they see any red flags or anything, we work very closely with them.
That leads me to another question. So your event starts at ten and on Sundays, you're not supposed to serve until noon? Is with this, the special license, you get to, do you serve earlier?
I think we'll still keep that twelve o'clock maybe.
Oh, okay.
Uh, yes, we can work with that.
Yeah, I mean, the liquor board will tell you what you can.
Yes, and that, we, we had the same question and we weren't sure. So it's, it's whatever the liquor board says, we go by.
And I guess that's the part, yeah, like, when I was reading through this, like, our application is pretty self-explanatory, but it doesn't really reference any of that separate step. So I just wanted confirmation that there is another party that is responsible for that separate step.
There's a whole other part that involves several other steps. Yes. Um, yes, is the answer to that. So we have like this much of it and then liquor board has this much of it.
Okay.
They're super easy to work with.
Yes.
Yes.
So what is our process for giving this approval?
It'll be at regular session.
It'll be one of the things that we.
For the open container.
And if this is, if this is, if this is a success and Giovanni wants to continue doing it at that location, what we did this year is we tried to get as many of the events that are repeating at the beginning of the calendar year. So that way, mayor and council can do one blanket approval for the open containers if we're familiar with the events that are happening. And liquor board's on board with that, so. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'd love to see you guys.
Thank you.
Human trafficking in Washington County update. Um, we have Ms. Rachel Maslow and program director for Safe Place Child Advocacy Center. Sorry, I don't have everyone else's names, but could you please introduce yourself?
All right. Thank you for having us. Um, so I'm Rachel Maslow. I'm the program director at Safe Place Child Advocacy Center. We are, um, a off-site program of the Washington County Department of Social Services. And we're here today to speak about human trafficking in our county. Um, and then what, you know, we are doing about it as a county. So go ahead and introduce yourself.
Chris Hoffman, I work also at the Safe Place Advocacy Center, the Child Advocacy Center. Um, I'm the grants outreach and advocacy supervisor. So we're just gonna kind of give you an overview of all the great things we're doing from the safe place.
And I'm Natalie Reed. I'm the human trafficking regional navigator for Washington County. Um, so we'll get started. I'll go ahead and with my, um, initial part of our presentation here. So, uh, we'll start kind of with just the definition of trafficking and talk kind of about the basics and what that looks like. Um, and just define a few important terms and then we'll look, talk a little bit more about dynamics that lend to these terms and what that looks like locally. So when we're talking about trafficking, the Federal Trafficking Victims Protection Act identifies two types of trafficking. Um, the first is sex trafficking and the second is labor. Um, so as we can see, sex trafficking is defined by the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, obtaining, or soliciting of any person for the, for commercial sex in which the Commercial Sex Act is induced by force, fraud, or coercion, or in which the person induced to perform such an act has not attained eighteen years of age. Um, so that's a really long definition, so we'll break it down really quick. Um, basically, any person under the age of eighteen, we don't need to be able to say that force, fraud, or coercion occurred for us to say that trafficking has happened. If there's any commercial exchange for a sexual act, that's considered trafficking. Um, in adults, we would need to be able to see that they were either forced, frauded, or coerced into performing that sex act in order for us to say that it's trafficking. Um, and so kind of to define a commercial sex act, it's any exchange of something of value for any type of sexual act. Um, that could be exchange of money specifically. Um, we could also count shelter, housing, um, drugs, it could be food or clothing. Specifically, when we're talking about child sex trafficking, we might see traffickers appeal to children with things that are valuable to them. So this could be a new phone or money to get their nails done. It could be, um, for little kiddos, we might see exchange for money to buy games on their Xbox or, um, they like to play Fortnite or Roblox, Roblox. Um, so money in exchange for being able to buy those types of things. Um, and then when we're talking about labor trafficking, the definition is very similar. So recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, or obtaining of any person for the purpose of labor or services. And this would be again through the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of engaging that person in any type of involuntary servitude, um, slavery, peonage, or debt bondage. So to talk about force, fraud, and coercion, um, we referenced in both of these definitions, force is probably typically what we think of when we think of trafficking or the beginning of trafficking. So maybe we think of somebody being taken by their trafficker, being kidnapped. Um, physical harm or physical restraint, this can involve sexual assault. It could even be something as simple as just monitoring them on a regular basis or keeping them kind of detained in a certain space. Oftentimes, these are early tactics that a trafficker might use to break down a victim's resistance. Um, but I do like to address that there doesn't have to be any type of force for someone to be trafficked. Um, I think oftentimes when we think of trafficking, we think of kids or women being taken from their homes or taken from their parents. And we don't have to have kidnapping, um, involved in a trafficking event for it to be considered trafficking. Um, the next piece of this is fraud. This could be any type of false promise regarding employment, wages, marriage, um, love, attempts for a better life. Um, so over time, we might notice that the nature of this relationship starts to change. We might see working conditions change. Some of the promises that the person made might change, um, to that victim. I think maybe a good example of this could be someone who has a family member or someone in the US who's saying, you know, if you want to come here, I'll go ahead and get stuff set up for you to have a better life. Go ahead and send me some financial compensation. I'll set things up for you. And then they get here and learn that now they have to either provide sex acts or labor in order to get access to the money, um, that they sent to that person. It could be as simple as someone who has been talking to a child and attempts to groom them for eventual exploitation. Um, kind of changing the nature of that relationship when they do ask for, um, whether it be pictures or for them to engage in a sex act. And then we could see that the child now feels as if their relationship or the stability of that relationship is dependent on them providing that commercial sex or that commercial sex, uh, material. And then when we're talking about coercion, this would be any type of threat, um, or threat of harm or threat of harm to family members. This would be maybe what we would think of as like more psychological manipulation. It could be document confiscation, um, threats to out somebody. So I think locally, we might see this a lot with those who are in the system or have involvement with, um, maybe like a substance use treatment facility who are on probation pull. Um, anybody who is already vulnerable and is already dependent on the approval of any type of those systems. Um, so a trafficker might exploit the fact, maybe somebody, um, recently had a relapse. And they could say, you know, if you try to leave this situation, I will out you to your probation officer. I'll tell your methadone clinic that you have been taking your doses accordingly, things like that. All right, so now I'm gonna turn it over to Chris and she's gonna talk a little bit about what trafficking looks like in child welfare specifically.
Um, so one of the, um, child welfare kind of specific is pimp controlled. So essentially, that is just someone who is controlling the child and making them perform the sexual acts in order to finance, for their financial gain and then to, to basically support that pimp. They're giving the pimp money, um, and that pimp is then living off of what the, the child is doing. Um, familial trafficking obviously is, uh, with anybody within the family, parent caregiver, grandmother, brother, sister. Um, anybody who is in the family member who is trafficking their, their relative. Um, the non-pimp controlled trafficking is any child under the age of eighteen who's involved in a commercial sect act, sex act, um, without the control of someone doing it. Sometimes refer as, we refer that as like survivor sex. So if we have homeless youth who are out here on the streets, a lot of those kids engage in survivor sex just to like make meat, make ends meet as far as food or clothing or shelter or transportation. Um, so we do see a lot of that, especially with the increase in our homeless youth in Washington County. Another thing I wanted to point out is sexual abuse. Um, so with sexual abuse, a lot of that is prevalent with the sexual traffic, sex trafficking. It kind of goes hand in hand. A lot of those kids that are victims of sexual, sex trafficking have been victimized and have been sexually abused at some point in time.
Um, so something we always do like to highlight is trafficking is a very important topic and it's very worthy of raising awareness about, but also it's not nearly as prevalent as child sexual abuse in general. So the, the frequency of child sexual abuse that we see is much higher, um, than sex, child sex trafficking. It's a form of child sexual abuse, but it's not nearly equivalent to the amount of reports or concerns for reports that we get for regular child sexual abuse. Um, but as Chris highlighted, it's definitely one thing that can make, um, child sexual abuse is one of those things that might make a youth vulnerable. Having a history of abuse or neglect in childhood is another thing that might make a child or youth vulnerable. Anyone who's living in an unstable housing situation or who has a caregiver who's not regularly checking in with where they're at. Um, just not having a trusted adult who's checking in, that puts a youth significantly at risk for another adult then stepping in and offering to provide that. Um, anyone who runs away often or is in transition between caregivers. Oftentimes, youth who are involved in the juvenile justice system might be more at risk. They may already be displaying risk behaviors and/or, um, already be in a situation where they don't have relationships with those trusted adults because they might be in a facility that's outside of their normal, um, environment or their normal community. Um, and any youth who already have any type of, um, social service involvement or in foster care or in, um, kinship care, um, would be more at risk as well. Um, any type of recently migrated individual or any undocumented, um, immigrants, specifically because they might not have access to resources, they might not have knowledge of local resources, they might not have family here to kind of help them navigate those types of things. Um, specifically if they're, um, not English speaking and just not having access to be able to navigate or understand what's available to them in the area. Anyone who's facing poverty or economic need, um, and then kind of hand in hand with that, anyone who has a chemical dependency would be significantly at risk. Um, specifically because they had the chance of going into withdrawal if they don't have that chemical. Um, so kind of to flip the coin on that, things that make people vulnerable to being trafficked are the exact things that traffickers are looking for when they're trying to figure out who they want to exploit. Um, so someone who is looking for a family connection, someone who doesn't have someone checking in with them regularly and wants, um, that trusted adult, that love or unity or family feeling is someone who a trafficker might be able to recognize and then take advantage of. Someone who has significant financial need or a chemical dependency specifically. If they're getting their, um, their substances from that trafficker or if that trafficker is helping pay their way through school or through treatment or through a type of medical care that they need. And so what types of things might keep victims from leaving their trafficker? Obviously, we've kind of talked about some of these things already, but just the, the needs that make them vulnerable, um, which I do wanna highlight are not weaknesses. But we're talking about lack of knowledge on rights, um, and protection. So a lot of the time in rural areas, we don't have the awareness or we're not able to raise awareness um, to spread to individuals who might be vulnerable. Um, oftentimes, and specifically in adults, there's the misconception that because they initially consented to be in a commercial sex, um, relationship, because while it is illegal, adults can't consent to commercial sex. Uh, they might think because they initially consented that if force, fraud, or coercion eventually do become present, that they can't go to the police or they can't report because they were engaging in something that's considered illegal. Um, and also specifically, if the trafficker had them engage in any type of illegal activity. Um, there are protections for human trafficking victims who had to commit misdemeanors and things while they were in their trafficking situation. Um, so just a lot of fear surrounding coming forward and, and talking to law enforcement about that. Um, again, just chemical dependency, financial circumstances, and just basic living needs being provided by that trafficker might keep someone in that situation as well. Um, I think with children and youth specifically, we see this a lot as trauma bonds with that trafficker. It might be the only trusted adult in their life. It might be the only person who seems to understand them on that level. Um, so to leave that situation would mean that they would be alone. Um, and then again, just a lack of supportive caregivers leaves a child or a youth vulnerable to being able to have a caregiver come into their life or an adult come into their life who could potentially exploit them if they're looking to do that. All right, and so our potential identifying factors, these on their own or standalone do not mean that someone is being trafficked or is necessarily at risk for being trafficked. But these in combination with a few, um, of each other might raise some red flags for us as providers. Um, so someone who seeks only emergency medical attention or seeks emergency medical attention often. Um, they don't have a regular care provider. They're not in touch with, um, making sure their medical needs are met until it's an emergency. Someone who has recurrent STIs, um, or has specifically a youth or child who might have relationships with older adults, um, or maybe they're only close to older adults. Maybe it's an older adult that their family member don't, family members don't know or is not a family member of theirselves. Um, someone with an abnormal number of sexual partners or someone who's constantly accompanied by someone. Um, I think we see this portrayed a lot in the media, um, or maybe like, like a medical documentary or something where somebody will come in and then there's just someone that's always there. Maybe they're talking for them. They have all of their paperwork, so that would be a red flag, um, definitely. Um, if they don't have their own identification or documentation and they're saying that someone else has it and they can't get it, that might be a red flag as well. Um, someone who lies about their age or is not willing to disclose their age and especially if they're with an older adult, that might be concerning. Um, anyone who has access to things that aren't consistent with their circumstance. I think specifically with children and youth, if we know that their family is struggling to provide basic living needs and they're showing up to school or to different activities that they do outside of school and they have a brand new phone and they have new clothes and their nails are done and their lashes are done, new sneakers, those are concerns, um, that, that might raise some red flags. Um, and then lastly, any evidence of PTSD, um, self-destructive behaviors or self-harm attempts when there's no documented mental health history or mental health treatment history um, might be concerning as well.
What, what would you consider a suspicious tattoo? Do you have any, like, any?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped on. Um, typically, in certain areas, specific traffickers might have a type of tattoo that they require, like the people that they're trafficking to get. This is not always common, um, but sometimes you'll see like a crown tattoo. It might be like a suspicious one that we see often.
Does that get communicated to law enforcement or somehow to the public?
Typically, they are aware of which ones are common in the area. I've not run across that a lot in my work just because I primarily work with children and youth. Um, but I think that's a really good question.
Okay.
Yeah, and something that law enforcement should be aware of if not already. All right, and now I'm gonna switch it over to Rachel.
I'm gonna do some, yeah, I'm gonna talk about some statistics here. So, um, some of our fiscal year, I'll go through fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four just to kind of give you a little update of like where we were and how we've kind of progressed. And we anticipate like the numbers is going up as, you know, we go along here. So fiscal year twenty-two, um, Child Protective Services conducted sex, or seven sex trafficking investigations. Um, so that means it was actually assigned to a CPS worker. An investigation was done and then there was a finding on the investigation, whether that be ruled out, indicated, or unsubstantiated. Um, and then we conducted ten assessments, which means it's a risk of harm. Um, it doesn't meet the criteria to be an actual investigation, investigation, but it, it reaches the level of a CPS worker just touching base with the family, touching base with the kiddo, Natalie touching base with the kiddo to see if like, okay, what's going on in this household? And then if it rises to that level, we can then bump it up to an investigation. So in fiscal year, um, twenty-three, we had CPS conducted five sex trafficking investigations and then there were twenty-four, um, assessments, risk of harm assessments. Fiscal year twenty-four, uh, there CPS conducted eight, uh, investigations and twenty assessments, um, for trafficking victims. Um, so as far as this past quarter, uh, April through June, so the regional navigator has received nine new referrals. So those referrals can come from Meredith's Medical Center, any therapist in the community, um, any teacher, anybody, you know, with, in the public school system. These referrals can come from, if kiddos may be living here, but the abuse happened in say Montgomery County or another county in Maryland, whoever the family, wherever the abuse occurred, um, and it doesn't have to be in the state of Maryland, but wherever the abuse occurred, if the family is currently living here, then they can make a referral to our Child Advocacy Center and then Natalie will be able to touch base with that family, um, and, and offer them services as long as they're living in Washington County. So risk of harm trafficking, um, so as far as the, the quarters concerned, we had one referral from DJS, eight of them were from CPS. Um, out of eight of those children, they did have a history of either abuse or neglect in the home. Um, four of those children that we referred, um, or the youth are currently in place and out of home, so in some type of foster care system. Um, and then three of the youth had caregivers with some type of chemical dependency.
What happens to the caregivers in these situations?
So there's, it's really difficult with chemical dependency as far as when CPS gets screened in or screened out. So chemical dependency in and itself does not meet criteria for a CPS investigation. The parent or caregiver has to show a form of neglect or abuse in order for CPS to get involved. It just doesn't meet that level. If it meets the level that severe abuse or neglect was involved and CPS is, is involved, then if we have to place a family or a kiddo with another family member, um, or we would take care and custody of the kiddo and the kiddo may go into, um, foster care. We also have in-home services. Rachel may talk a little bit about this as well. We have services, um, that are, it's called intera, interagency family preservations with the families that will work with these families in trying to get them off of substances. We have a start program that we work with the Washington County Health Department. Um, we have peer, peer counselors that work at DSS who are employed through the Health Department um, and the Behavioral Health Program that work with our families as well who are substance.
Is there any case when these children are identified, they're taken out of that situation, then where do they, where do they go? They, are they allowed to go back?
The parents or the, you mean?
The child.
The child, yeah, so the department will work diligently, like if the child is placed in foster care, the foster care worker assigned to the family will work diligently getting this parent or parents or caregiver back on track so that way we can, you know, reunify the kiddo with the family. Because that's ultimately the goal is reunification. You know, we don't want to keep kids separated from their parents.
But you don't want them to go back into a?
Correct.
So these are just for referrals and assessments? This is not necessarily an actual like finding?
Correct, so the only time there will be a finding is if there's an actual investigation where it meets that level of criteria that abuse or neglect has occurred. So with the referral process for the risk of harm, then that can come in if anybody has a concern and you are a mandated reporter and you make a phone call into DSS and you say, hey, I have concerns that this kiddo is, you know, I see this kid all the time, downtown Hagerstown and X, Y, and Z are my concerns. So that will rise to like a risk of harm where the Natalie will touch base with the family, but it might not necessarily rise to the level of an actual investigation where a finding would be an outcome.
An investigation is when someone calls in and says this child is being trafficked and they have a certain amount of credible evidence in that report to suggest otherwise. The risk of harm is when there's many risk factors, but there's not actual evidence that any exchange of goods for sex acts is occurring. But possibly the child has goods that they can't afford, they're using substances which may be exploited, they're running away often, they have an older boyfriend. All of those things combined would definitely raise the red flag where we would do an assessment.
Is there a program or something that occurs when a teacher is new to WCPS? Is there like a, some kind of identifying factors education before they go to start teaching? And how often do you educate WCPS and its teachers on the identifying factors?
So every summer, Washington County Department of Social Services participates in summer sessions with the staff at WCPS. We host about four of them. Unfortunately, it's not a very long timeframe we get. We get about thirty minutes to go over all of DSS's services.
Oh, my gosh.
Quite many, right. So we do do those sessions and the Regional Navigator Program is part of that, but to be fully transparent, you know, we're only able to share minimal amount of information, but we do go over CPS mandated reporting, all of our services available at DSS. And then in addition, where all of us combined are on different work groups which overlap with a lot of Washington County Public Schools staff members. And so certain staff members such as the PPWs, they may get more in-depth information on sex trafficking and sexual abuse, things like that, and then they're able to help relay that. But it is a hope of ours in the future to be able to increase the amount of time we do have with the Washington County Public Schools employees.
That is my hope too. My son was a teacher in New York City and he had to go through, you know, quite a bit of extensive additional classes in order, because of the type of children that, you know, and this kind of risk. So there was like actual courses that he had to take before he became a teacher in New York City. Just a, yeah, much different.
Yes.
So when we talk about what can we do, like what can we do as Hagerstown to try to help these kiddos? So really just paying attention to what's happening in our community and within our city, pay attention to our youth, our own children, our children's friends. If you're at community or athletic events, you know, just really like honing in and just picking up on anything that you might notice. Making kiddos feel safe around you, making sure you know you give them a safe place if they can talk about hard things. Continue to educate yourselves on human trafficking. You know, a lot of times it's always like when Natalie I or someone, we go to trainings, it's we always call like Human Trafficking 101, well, you know, the safe place is really trying to increase the knowledge in our community and not really just do like the 101 basics anymore. We really want to like educate them on, you know, new things that are new trends that are happening, you know, around the world. And if you see something, say something. It doesn't matter how small it is, please call 911, call the human trafficking hotline. You know, there's the human trafficking hotline, you can always call the two four oh four two oh, the two 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 number for Department of Social Services. That number is a twenty-four hour hotline. Within the past year or so, we did go to like a state hotline, so people just have to say, just have to say Washington County whenever you call in. It'll ask where the, what county did the abuse take place in. Also, you know, what we have here in Washington County, we have the Anti-Human Trafficking Collaborative. So we meet quarterly and we do have a core trafficking group, but we invite and encourage anybody who is interested in learning about trafficking or would like to help out in any community events or anything that the Safe Place is putting on for your own businesses, for your own personal. You can contact Natalie or myself and we can get you, you know, you can request to join that group and we can get you in, an email set up and invite you to our next meeting.
I think that, you know, our inspectors, our code inspectors, I think it would be something very good, and they're in these houses, you know, often, who knows what they see, what kind of experiences they may incur. I think that it, to educate them on what to look for, just in case, I know they're not going to be mandated to.
They've been through that training.
Okay.
They were through the training in Frederick, they went through it four months ago?
I will say though, I had a case when I was doing CPS where it was a fire department went in for a smoke alarm kept going off. And the neighbors kept calling, so they went in and they said, hey, you know, things aren't looking kind of odd with these kiddos, they don't really don't match up with the family that's there, so they made the report. You know, so we got involved, checked it out, did what we needed to do, but you're right, I mean, just people who are just randomly in and out of homes don't necessarily know what to look for, but it's good to keep them educated.
Yeah, just top of mind. It's easy to just kind of look for what you're looking for and not see the things around you.
That goes for coaches, like athletic directors?
Coach it, yeah.
People who work in child centers? Do they get this type of training?
We do mandated reporting training, like usually with like our Head Start. Again, it's under Washington County Public Schools, but we don't really get into the daycare, so to speak. So that is something that we could definitely look into, but we don't really get into private daycares or anything like that.
Yeah, to piggyback on that, I don't know if you guys have ever looked, getting involved with any of the local like youth leagues, little league, basketball leagues, YMCA, anything like that and given some, you know, training for those guys for coaches.
Yeah, I even think about young people being able to recognize the signs and other young people.
Agreed.
You know, I think that the awareness around that, if you're noticing your friend is getting new things, you know, how do you safely, you know, make sure an adult knows about that?
Agreed.
Thank you, that's for the work that you do.
You're welcome. Thank you. So just to briefly go over just Safe Place in general, so as we've talked about, we have Child Protective Services response. At Safe Place, the highlight of our Child Advocacy Center and every Child Advocacy Center across the nation is using a multidisciplinary team response to coordinate efforts for victims of child sexual abuse, child sex trafficking. And then at Safe Place, we also handle severe physical abuse and child fatalities as a result of maltreatment in Washington County. And so we work closely with the police, with prosecution, with medical through Meredith's Medical Center. We have mental health therapists on site who are able to provide trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy to victims of trafficking or other forms of maltreatment. We have an advocacy team and Natalie is part of that team, but we also have general advocates as well who help other families, so they're able to provide case management, referrals for services, emotional support, court support. And then we have our community outreach and education, the ability to provide ongoing presentations on the topic of sex trafficking, sexual abuse, other forms of maltreatment. And we can provide that pretty much in any setting, as long as people are willing to have us, we will come and talk. And then our final program, the Regional Navigator Program, this was created by the Child Sex Trafficking Services and Screening and Services Act in 2019. Washington County was one of the first three pilot counties in the state of Maryland. And now every county in the state of Maryland does have a regional navigator who is the point person who provides all case management services, emergency response, outreach and education to victims of trafficking or youth who are at risk. So Natalie, to wrap up, did you want to share anything else specific about your program?
So for those youth and children who do have the like risk of harm responses where there are multiple risk factors, but we are not 100% sure or able to prove that trafficking's occurred, a lot of those services will just look like involving them in mental health services, making any necessary referrals, providing additional support for their caregivers. And then the big piece for that is psychoeducation around what is safe online and what's not safe, some of those red flag behaviors. Kind of educating them a little bit about dynamics of trafficking and certain grooming tactics that those looking to exploit children might use. And then also education for their caregivers, how to keep them safe online, what's healthy behavior for certain ages, different things about body safety and things like that, just to make sure that the caregiver and the child both can kind of work together to keep them as safe as possible. And then for those cases where we have an open investigation or some of the more like adult cases where there's identified trafficking, then it's going in and potentially providing like some crisis support. So when they're getting out of that situation, obviously, that's like the most stressful time, just getting them to somewhere safe, kind of navigating that transition with them. And then once they are safe, helping them get in touch with basic living needs and making sure that those are provided and that they'll be able to eventually get to the point where they have an understanding of resources and can do that on their own. And then just going in again and trying to offer different types of referrals for mental health services, make sure they get in touch with a trauma therapist if that's something they're interested in, and just providing ongoing support for court and things like that if there should be some type of court following.
We are scheduling a fall open house at our Child Advocacy Center, so everyone here will be invited to that, so hopefully you guys can come out and take a tour of the Safe Place and kind of see what else, what else we do and amazing things we do with the kiddos over there.
Thank you.
I mean, this was, this was heavy to hear, but I believe we all needed to hear this. And for those watching, please talk to your children and also share that this group exists again, so they can know, coaches, anybody, children. But thank you for what you do, this is, this is a lot, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us. Thank you.
Real quick before you guys leave, HPD, the chief and captain in the back, did you guys have anything you wanted to add to this conversation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
All right, next we have Parks and Neighborhood Illegal Substance Awareness Discussion. Mayor and city council members, also Special Secretary Emily Keller of Opial Response and Vicki Sterling, Director of Behavioral Health Services with Washington County Health Department, and I see Mr. David Washington.
Wow.
Official title, Mr. David.
Hi.
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 It's like a reunion.
I know.
Yes. Thanks for having us today, do you want to kick it off or? Okay, so now you guys, I want to discuss syringes in parks and other places that they're being found. And I've read some of the things on social media about the harm reduction program in general and about the Health Department giving out clean syringes and what that program actually looks like. So obviously, these two are the experts in what's going on here in Washington County. But I put together a quick memo, I just thought it was important to take away the syringe service program specifically and talk about harm reduction and the benefits that it provides to our community. And then we can get down to the nitty gritty of like what's happening here locally and what more we can potentially do. So when someone does participate in a harm reduction program, they're five times more likely to go to treatment. I think we need to remember that throughout this whole conversation because they meet with peers, they're treated with dignity and respect, they're not pushed to go into treatment, their needs are being met, whatever they need in that moment. So if that person is a person who uses drugs and they're not ready to get treatment at the time, that's fine. It's, but they build those relationships the entire time and it's not just syringes that they're receiving access to, it's naloxone distribution, fentanyl test strips, and a ton of other services I kind of outlined here. They can get counseling, treatment and recovery services, case management, HIV testing, wound care. Right now, we're seeing a very high rate of xylazine in our illegal drug supply here in Maryland that causes horrific wounds. And wound care is kind of really, really important right now because we're seeing wounds that are so bad it's leading to amputation. And that provides complications when someone is ready to go get treatment, a treatment center can't take them because they can't meet the needs of their health conditions at the time. So they do provide wound care at most harm reduction programs and like I said, naloxone, fentanyl, testing strips. And just regarding the number, because I also hear a lot of times, first of all, the SSP referral data at the bottom is off, so I apologize, I'll send an updated copy. But we talk about tax dollars being spent and people get up in arms saying, you know, I don't want my money being spent on things like syringes. First of all, people who use drugs deserve to be healthy too, right? They deserve to be treated with kindness and respect. And so it's funding a healthcare, a public healthcare program. And I just wanted to outline that there was a study done and I linked it in your memo in 2021, if a syringe service program prevents one case of HIV, that's a savings of $229,000. So if they have a $500,000 budget, if they stop three different people from getting HIV, it's already paid for itself. So that's how important this is, it's not a waste of money, it's helping people, because not everyone uses drugs and not everyone has intravenous drug use, but those people also have sex and have contact with other people that spreads other diseases. So these programs are so beneficial to our communities as a whole and to public health. And I just wanted to outline that because I think we get caught up in the negative sides and we don't really talk about the good that they're providing at the Health Department. And there are twenty-five syringe service programs across the state. So this is not specific to Washington County, this is all over the state, and it is our priority as a state. We're focused on five areas and that's prevention, harm reduction, treatment, recovery, and public safety. So this will continue to be a priority for the governor's administration. So I'll turn it over to you guys if you have to discuss the local stuff.
Yeah, the numbers, we can update Emily's numbers because they aren't even close.
Sorry.
To the good or bad?
To the good.
Oh, okay.
No, I know, like in, in last year, we distributed eighteen thousand doses of Narcan. You know, we were asked because, to come here because of the needles found in the parks. This is the first that anyone's reported that to us. Like, we're not getting calls. We are more than happy to respond and support and work with. David and I went back, we've gotten, I'm gonna let you do that.
Okay, so starting, prior to our conception, we didn't have a way for people to return syringes at all. So I don't know what was happening prior to 2013. We know people weren't injecting drugs, obviously, otherwise we wouldn't have a syringe services program here, but in 2023, we had eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight syringes returned to the Health Department with the work that we did. In 2024, we've had nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine returned. So that isn't on the street. We've distributed seven hundred and ninety-four Sharps containers, so that's been opportunities for people to put those syringes in a.
Did you say there?
Seven hundred and ninety-four.
In the county, there's seven hundred and ninety-four Sharps containers.
That people have gotten, correct.
That we give out. That we, okay.
We started doing pickups or going out and doing outreach in 2023. We think, most people know that they can contact us and let us know, if you see a syringe laying in front of the library, call us, we'll come out and we'll get it.
And I will say dispatch sends them to us, because I've gotten calls after hours on the weekends.
And dispatch has met us at places that we were like, where we had, but since that inception in 2023, we've had a total of thirteen calls.
I, I agree, I think that, you know, the program is necessary, but also I think that for families that may, somebody take their kids to the park and they see three syringes, calling the Health Department and waiting for the Health Department to come pick them up, just kind of, you know what I mean? So I think that even that, that kind of like frustration with community that. that is actually, public safety is important to them too, you know? And so I think that having understanding around, you know, what the public is experiencing right now. I mean, I get calls all the time to come down, you know, there's a needle and a band and feces in front of someone's house, you know? Those are the frustrations that we're hearing, that I'm hearing personally from the public. So I agree that the program's great, but I also think that we have to figure out how, you know, I don't even know what words to say, but.
Effort and maybe even, I mean, and Dave and I are more than happy to work on a campaign about, you know, what to do when it happens or, but we also, and I, and I get it, we also talked, I mean, it's, it, it starts a visceral response when you see a needle. People litter all the time. There's condoms, there's liquor bottles, but the needle really freaks people out. And like other counties and other places have done disposals in their parks. Or Ontario has a disposal in every single park.
I think that was my question, you know, of the 794 containers, I don't know how many I've seen and I live downtown.
They bring it back to us. That's why you're not seeing them.
My question would be, when you're doing the education, when they come for the needle exchange, is there an, an, an education for the individual to say like, you need, here's a Sharps container.
Oh yeah.
Sharps containers in these areas, either put them here or bring them back to us.
When we enroll them, we have.
As you said, there aren't Sharps disposal containers across Washington County. And this is something we brought up years ago. Could we place Sharps disposal containers in different locations throughout Washington County? And that wasn't something that we were ready to do as a county. But these containers that we give to people are containers that you take individually.
Right, they're, they're smaller. They're singles and they come back to us and we have this conversation. We even give incentives for them to bring them back. Yeah, we give them bus passes because, right, if you're, and you know, the city has done a really good job of moving people out. So they're farther away and it's harder for them to bring them back to us. So we give them bus passes so they can come to the, to 925 and dispose of them.
Every, every, every other day, I leave my house for a walk. I walk down, I watch folks. I, I'm just, this is what I experience. I watch folks get breakfast and then I watch folks eat the breakfast, then dispose of the trash right there in the middle of Jonathan Street area or in the middle of the alley or behind Goodwill. And then they go down to Jonathan Street where there's now a line. And so, you know, leaving, or, and then when I come back around, there are now, there's now folks that are laid out in different places that they have shot up right there, they have gotten high right there on people's property. Like I watch it happen.
At the church on Thursday nights and we've tried.
My, so I'm just saying, like, I, I just think that there has to be some conversations around what that means for a community. You got kids going to school in the morning? You, I mean, I've dropped my grandkids off at the, the, the community center to summer camp. And I mean, it's just, I, I, I agree that the programs, that's what accountability is on, you know, the folks when they're, it's, it's, it's messy. It's messy and it's a lot and it's putting a lot of strain on everyone, you know, on city services, on the, on the neighborhoods that are there. So I don't want to sit here and, and, and say I don't think that it's necessary, but I think we need to have a real conversation about what our, our, our area looks like at some times, you know? Because how do I answer to that? Like how, how do you, like how? How do we, how do we answer to everyone wants to feel safe?
Well, I think one of the things is, is that there's scarce resources that, like Goodwill's there, but they don't have the capacity to work with individuals. They don't have treatment, they don't have a harm reduction program. We have to meet people where they're at. If harm reduction needs to be in the alley once or twice a week to work with those people, that's fine. We could do that. We could set something up. But we also need support from our community partners. For instance, LEAD, it's a collaborative effort. And we need to use, utilize that because that's what it's built for, is to engage these individuals. Now I understand LEAD's a heavy lift. It is not like overnight success. But the successes that we have had, and I wish I couldn't mention names, but I can't. But we have a handful of people that I can't believe they're not dead and that are doing really well in long-term recovery. The problem is, I think, and I get it, everybody wants this to like go away overnight. It didn't start overnight. And these people have chronic trauma, like long-term. So it's not going to be like, oh tomorrow everything is going to be fine if we just put them somewhere. Because when that happens, they end up dying. But when we work with them long-term and meet with them where they are, we have better sustainable outcomes. And that is really what I believe is going to make the difference.
Yeah, and I agree.
But the health and.
It can't go away overnight.
And Earl can vouch for this. The health department can't do it on their own.
Well, I agree. And I, and I don't, and I'm, so I'm not attacking or any of that, the work that's being done. I agree that it doesn't just go away overnight, but I also believe that we are looking at something. If we don't try to figure out how we can, we can make the difference, you know, in this community. But by making sure everyone is safe and that probably, and everyone is treated with respect and dignity. Because I got some homeowners that don't feel respected or, you know, whenever they walk out their house and someone's laid out and they can't, you know, maneuver. And so that's kind of what I hope we can have a discussion about, you know.
And that's why, and, and just to say, we have crisis response. They can call our peers and they go out. Our peers are out every single day except for Thursday. They're at, the one, the crisis response peers are at the health department on Thursdays because they have to get, do their paperwork. But every other day, and last year they made 100, the 204 contacts of overdoses. That's huge. I mean, that's like better than they ever done, they've ever had. But nobody's called them for something like that.
Is that 24/7?
No, but our funding extends to Waystate or Shepherd Pratt. So after hours, they go to Shepherd Pratt. And then Shepherd Pratt, if they need us, they can call our after-hours line and, and then we would respond. We wouldn't respond that night. We're trying to, hopefully this year with the funding, we're going to be able to do some on-call hours after hours.
Can I go back to your point about the idea of doing a campaign?
Yeah.
That would be a good idea. So people know that there's, I mean, probably getting a little calls because people don't know what number to call. So if we do some type of campaigning for awareness, this is a number, we're open, we're available 24/7. Because I've gotten complaints that, you know, they've called health department on Saturday and there was no one to come immediately. So they picked up the syringe. That person happened to be a nurse, so she obviously was okay with picking up a syringe. But that also sparked this whole discussion to have it on the agenda of, you know, what do we do?
After hours.
When we get those complaints and, you know, what information can we share?
I will tell you, we don't have staff on the weekends to pick up syringes. Unless it comes to me and I'm like, I have a Sharps container.
I see Earl wants to say something so bad.
Councilmember Chandler has been actually trying to say something for a while.
I know, but he raised his hand right here when I had a specific question about what.
Yeah, just to reiterate what Vicky said. I'll be, I'll be honest with you. As health officer of the community, like we're basically holding the wheels on this thing. That's not to take anything away from all the good work that people are doing and my staff and other community partners. But I'll tell you, in order to make a dent in it, we as a community have to come together. And we're nowhere near what we need to do collectively together in order to move stuff forward. You know, the health department, yeah, we're the health department, we're the face of it, we come and do these things. But we are, you know, that whole baby in the bath water deal? Like, we're saving the babies when they come down. We have no capacity and the community has really shown no capacity to truly look upstream and say, health department, business community, collective, like everybody's moving forward in the same direction collectively together. I don't sit here in front of you today going, and this is the program that we have to do. But we have to have a really serious conversation. Like, and everybody's got to be on board. It can't be just Meredith and health department, it can't be just the state, can't be just, like, everybody has to be vested in it. You know, it's like when something new is happening in town, everybody coalesced around the stadium. Everybody's got to coalesce around the issues that we have with behavioral health here. It's just kind of being kicked to the periphery. Now, with all of that said, you know, you get into deeper trauma, social determinants of health, stuff that we can't even really touch. You know, we don't have expertise. DSS, all those organizations, everybody's got to come together. Because when we go out and we talk to someone, they're in a crisis. You know, they may be like, I have no idea where I'm going to sleep tonight. I have no idea where I'm going to eat. I maybe have a child who's homeless with me. You know, they're not ready to, to say, okay, let me go, how long is it? 90 days? All right, I'll go do that. They have all these other issues that need to be tackled along with that. So all that to just say, until we as a community collectively come together, seriously come together and say, you know, yes, we have this issue. We have people in our midst to, you know, we have to treat compassionately and with dignity. They're one of us. You know, we're not the morality police. What can we do about it? What can you do? What can you do? What can you do? And what can you do? And you got to be in it for the long haul.
So do we start that conversation?
But here's the thing.
Do we start that conversation in order to get the community, in order to get the community? Go ahead, Matt.
Well, Member Chandler, I, I'll address that first, kind of what I think you're trying to say is, if that's the case, what's the call to action? What can we do to help put a call to action out there to help what you're talking about, right? If the community needs to get together and, and kind of be cohesive, you know, when tackling the issue, I think we need a call to action so that we can actually make that happen, right? The, the other thing I'm more focused on this very specific issue we asked you guys to come here for tonight is, you know, as Councilmember Burnett said, we're getting a lot of calls and emails and, and people coming to us about like needles in parks and things like that. And they may not have that education who to call, that that's a lot of the problem. And I won't presume that all of these needles are coming from the needle exchange program. I'm not going to presume that. I'm not going to say where they came from. I don't know. I don't, I don't really care, frankly. But from my point of view, would, and I'm going to ask you guys as the subject matter experts, would it be advantageous or, or do you think that people would use them if we installed Sharps containers at our parks, say at bathrooms at the parks or places like that with a label or instructions on what to do if they find a needle? You know, not everybody's going to be comfortable picking them up, but maybe the users of the new, of the needles will put them in the Sharps containers. And if not, maybe some instructions on who to reach out to.
And that crisis number.
And I, yeah, and I don't think that's a bad idea. You know, looking at some of the Facebook posts, I did some, I just did some research because really it wasn't very realistic to me. And if you look, San Francisco did a pilot and they had a box that's capacity was 1,500 syringes. That was filled in 11 days. So 1,500 syringes honestly is not that much. I mean, it may, you know, but 11 days in San Francisco. And then Seattle, in a 15-month period, they collected 27,000. Seattle's big too. And within that 15-month period, it was only 5,000 on property. So like what we're seeing, I don't know that's realistic. I think it's more to incite fear and, and kind of perpetuate the stigma. But I think having them in the park would at least make families feel safer. And having the instructions and even doing a campaign about that. And we could like not have to, and I think one of the things that I struggle with of doing a campaign is perpetuating the stigma. So maybe it's more of a campaign that looks about littering. Like what if you find a biohazardous, including condoms, you know, syringes, whatever. I just don't want it to be like, oh, needles, because then people kind of like start to perpetuate that stigma. So to me, that's one of the things that I kind of reserve, I have reservations about.
To your first question, we have the mechanism.
We do. I have that written down.
You know, like when you talk about task force and whatnot, we have the mechanism in place. We've had, and don't tell the special secretary, I forgot the name, but we have the.
Overdose prevention.
Prevention team, which used to be the Opio Action Policy Group. That really is the, and it's been in existence, obviously renamed, but it's been in existence for many years now. Had great participation initially and then like everything else had just sort of petered out. And we've gotten, I think our last meeting, we had maybe five people or so. But it really is the central coordinating and sort of strategic directive group of, for the county. And, you know, tons of invites go out. And like I said, we don't get very much participation.
It's now an open meeting. It's on the open forum. Everybody gets an invite. We even posted on our Facebook page and we have five members.
And it, and, and that is the group that it's basically yearly, like along with the local behavioral health administration and that we do with the core service agency. It really is, we're set a strategic plan for the next year, two years, three years. What are we going to do as a community? Who's going to do it? You know, what's it going to look like? That, so, so the mechanism is in place. We just don't have the participation. Yes.
I, I would just say for the overdose prevention teams, we, when our executive order got updated in December establishing our office in a differed capacity, we did add partners that have to be at the table for the overdose prevention teams, which is why it's an open meeting now. And our department will no longer grant block grant funding if the jurisdictions aren't meeting. Because we had some that had five people that were super robust at one point, had 20, 25 people and then they stopped meeting. Some counties stopped meeting altogether. They weren't issuing strategic plans. So we looked and said, well, we don't have any teeth right now to say, you have to do this because you're getting all this money. What are you doing with it? Who's planning it? So now we can withhold funding and we will withhold funding if the jurisdictions aren't meeting and planning.
Every other month. Next one is September.
And that's shared on the health department's social media pages and what page?
We, I mean, we'll, we can send it out.
Well, yeah, I'll send it out to mayor and council, but it goes out to the whole behavioral health coalition list, the Washington Purple list, all the lists, provider lists, like we try to promote it as much as possible. Councilmember Russia.
I mean, I don't know how much I have to add to this discussion, except maybe first to say that, you know, I get the same emails from time to time. And I would never pretend to believe that you're not going to see this. I mean, I think the public has to accept the reality that there is no preventing this 100% from being in the community atmosphere any more than, 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 you know, any other social dilemma that exists. That's just the reality. So if you think that we're going to like clear this out of the parks forever, I don't see that happening. I think that's, that's a reality that I accept. I think for me, and I think it maybe gets to Earl's point of, okay, well then what do we do? I guess in my mind, I was sitting here and I was, what I hear is three things. People, products and programs. And I guess I kind of grouped them in my head that way and say, okay, what are the products that we need, you know, to execute the goal that we're trying to achieve? And the products are, you know, Sharps containers and, and, you know, naloxone and things like that. And I don't know. I mean, sitting here as an elected official, I don't know what level of those products we have in this community, one, that exist and are they adequate to provide for the community need that is there? And I don't know who the entity is you go to or receive them from or, or is responsible for the execution of getting them out into the community. And I think that gets to your point of, you know, if I'm just a patron in a park, I don't know any of this stuff. And then the second question is, okay, well then who are the people? And I think it gets to that point. You're telling me there's, you know, that there's a group that meets and, you know, it's great that, that there's a Facebook presence and a social media presence. But I think it gets to your point of, we talk about a lot of stuff at meetings like Greater Hagerstown and, and community coalition and et cetera. But this, this is one of those things that has to rise to that level to say, okay, here are, you know, here are the predicates of, of the things that, that have to happen. And so I think that that's the people portion. And then the third part is, you know, okay, if we know what products we need and we know who the people are that need to be involved, like the people at this table and the people at your departments, then we need to know what programs need to exist to execute them. And I feel almost like that's hard and parcel to what the governor tried to create with their position and mean to like filter into those communities. And at this table at this time, I don't have that answer. And I think that that would go a long way to the average patron because I use this one example. We last year when, you know, halfway. And I think that that would go a long way to the average patron, because I use this one example, we last year when, um, you know, halfway, national folks sort of took over, national little league, and it had been, they're probably dormant, you know, for a little bit of time. You go over to the minor league fields, there are folks utilizing that for inappropriate purposes, and you go over and, and they're like, wait a second, you know, we just want to run a a baseball program, you know what I mean? But here is a place that's being used in a manner that that won't allow for that. And I would never look at that person in the community and say to that average person, well, you know, you wanna run a baseball thing over there, you have to clean them dugouts up, you know what I mean, to make it happen. And so, there was disagreement, if you will, over, you know, how that was gonna happen. And as a person, I just go over and I say, okay, there's eight or nine needles in the dugout. I pick them up in a garbage bag, you know what I mean, and get rid of 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 the crap that's there. But then, what's the next step? You know what I mean? Who are, who are the people that I go to? What are the programs that exist and what are the products available to engage in that place? To limit it. I'm not pretending that you can prevent it, but to limit it. And I feel like a year later, you know, baseball goes to start up again and we're sort of back at almost like square run, square one of that moment. And we don't have the know-how of those three components to say, how do we keep that from being a recurring, uh, instance? No, definitely than when you go out the door and see that, or when, um, the gentleman that comes in, um, often, uh, and and cleans up his neighborhood, you know, those things.
And I don't wanna just, uh, seem like I was just highlighting Goodwill and the Johnson Street community, because it's the same over in the South Mulberry, where there's like Soul Haven, which I just feel what you said, it's all hands on deck, which means then with those types of services being provided and already communities that have issues that are going on, whether it's violent, whether it's poverty, whatever, and then you have that on top of it, it creates like a whole nother, you know, um, uh, I don't even know, I don't have a word for it, but, uh, it creates a whole nother thing. Um, and so being able to work with all the agencies together, um, you know, if Goodwill's giving breakfast, then maybe there needs to be someone.
We are there.
And that, I I, I'm sure, you know, I I'm not, I'm not picking on, uh, uh, I think that all the services have to happen, but there has to be, I feel there has to be some type of cohesiveness.
There should not be any activity where where anyone, uh, vagrant homeless, I don't care, is is provided a meal or provided some sort of a service where there is not an opportunity to have some sort of a of a of a outreach to them. For example, a church, for example, a church that wants to feed. And the line goes all the way around the corner with people standing there. Not, not only, I don't have a problem with with feeding them, but there should be an opportunity there for them to have outreach, to to be engaged, to 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 have a conversation with. I don't think that's happening. Do y'all think that's happening? It's not, I didn't think it was happening.
David can speak to what we're, cuz we're at numerous outreach, like, feedings. It's a blessing to be a blessing, always has people there.
Okay.
Multiple people.
And she runs a tight ship.
And she runs a very tight.
She's not the one I'm talking about either, cuz I know she does.
Trash.
Yeah.
If she catches it, you can't, like, she holds accountable.
She does.
I've, I've been there, I've watched her program, I've watched how she maneuvers. If you have left something, then she's gonna know about it, cuz someone's telling. And so, her thing is, that's why there's not, that there's not a mess, because she runs a very tight ship.
Then that should be a model to follow for anyone that is doing that. And I know you can't, I don't think this one can legislate it, you can't force it, you can't force it. It has to be, just like Earl said, it has to be a community-based effort to to make sure that happens.
I mean, and maybe that's one of the suggestions in OPT, because we're supposed to have faith-based community of representation, is that we talk about that and have them, you know, the hark.
And that's, we, we talked about that on Friday, the the three of, uh, the three of us at the time. We talked about on Friday that that there has to be more of that type of outreach, cuz I can't tell you how many, it's one of the biggest frustrations I've had in five years of doing this job, is how many meetings we have sat in, you, 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 you. And everybody's gung ho, and then everybody leaves. And the, one of the words I had to test morning, human language, is silos. Everybody goes back into their silo, and we do this, and we do this, and we do this, and we do this. And then, we're back here with councilmembers getting bombarded as they, as they should, as people should, about issues within our parks.
So why couldn't the city, much like what Ashley does, welcome back by the way, as a liaison, why couldn't the city have a coordinator? That is literally that person that coordinates the efforts between all the entities that you're talking about, all the social services, the complaints that we get, the, why couldn't we employ someone that is that person, that has every single resource and is at the events, the, because it's too much for your organization, it's too much for all of the organizations.
So, one of the things that I have said from the very beginning, is that I truly believe that we need an outside entity to come in and do a landscape assessment and make a recommendation and build a strategic plan with the over the opioid restitution funding. Because there's programs that would probably work if they were being utilized.
Right.
They're not being utilized. But like, we can sit here and talk about that all day, but they're still not gonna be utilized.
Well, there's not one per, there's not like a person to go to.
Right, I know, but like, like, to connect it all, so why couldn't the city, there's something you wanna say, I can tell, that
has this one individual that is that coordinator?
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I will say, as a community, we, we work well together, but I'm gonna agree with Earl. We don't have a singular vision when it comes to the entities. The city, the health departments, any of the nonprofits that are out there, have been doing the same job for as long as they've been doing the job. And the problem that we've got is that we've got a fifteen-year-old car that keeps having issues with it, and we keep taking it to the shop and fixing it like we always have, but the car keeps getting worse. And no one's figuring out how to get a new car. Because someone's gotta pay for that. So, I I agree with you that there there should be in a real world, in a perfect world, someone to help coordinate that. Really, the health department's that perfect thing, but no one's listening because they're in their silos doing the things that they gotta do.
Who are you to tell me what to do?
And you, yeah, because you're not funding it, you're not giving me the money, you're not doing that, and I'm always going to tell you that I'm helping.
Right.
I've helped fifty people last month, I've done this. It's like you've been helping fifty people for the last twenty years. The problem is, there's way more than fifty people out there now with these issues, and we've not grown as a community to the challenge of dealing with those issues. And changing those mindsets of organizations is hard. Look how long it took for us as a city to power somebody like Ashley to start this outreach to do what we're trying to do. And we're building on that program, you know, we've got, we've got more people, we're gonna be hiring into that program. We're talking about a handful of people here. This problem's much bigger than that. So having someone come in and say, here's how we're gonna coordinate this, here's what we're gonna do, here's our plan, here's our strategic plan, it's like Scott said, everybody goes back and they take the part that's easy. And that's why you have faith-based communities that will give free stuff, they'll do that because it makes them feel good, and they're doing good work, but they're not solving the problem, they're just pushing it down the road again, waiting for health department staff and other organizations to fix the problem. And the problem's much bigger. It's really huge, it's big, and it's daunting to the point that people just kinda go, huh, you know what, I'm not going to another opioid restitution, opioid meeting because nothing changes. And we're going back in, talking about the same thing over and over again. And until we come to a decision to say, what are we doing that's having an impact on the problem, a true impact on the problem, a positive impact, then why go to the meetings? So, if we're not changing how we're doing things, I I, I will say this, Scott and and this, this body here has been very good at giving us the opportunity to try something new and different. So we're trying that with Envy, we're trying that, taking on that responsibility, we're trying that with Ashley and Nurse Group. We're trying to take a role that we didn't take before. We're trying to change how that looks, that's ruffled some feathers in our community. Because people think that we're trying to take over what they're doing, or we're trying to dictate what they're doing. That, we don't have that kind of control, and I don't know why people think that. But at the same time, no one wants to come together and create that, I've tried to, I've tried to pitch this, I've talked to Earl about this not too long ago, about creating a task force, just like our narcotics task force, where you bring agencies together, they literally work together on a specific problem. And it's controlled by a board, a board of directors that controls that group. Everyone within those agencies still work for the people they work for, but they have a function now that says, here's that plan, and we're gonna move forward with that plan to address those issues. Creating a task force of of like-minded people, organizations, business owners, anybody else who wants to participate, but they submit their staff to work with the the entity that, part of that task force, and someone takes control of that. That's really about the only way you're gonna.
That's the, that's the only way I, I, we have ever thought that that would work.
We have these meetings all the time.
Right.
And, yes, everyone's like, yes, we do, here's what we're doing, here's what we're doing. We go to meetings every month, every other month, and they go roundtable, and everybody says what they're doing at that roundtable, but nothing ever changes.
Yeah.
They're regurgitating their their resources and what they're doing, but nothing ever changes. So.
So I think that it comes down to having an individual that is responsible for holding other people accountable and keeping those meetings going. I can tell you from Envy's perspective, in, you know, having the different levels of meetings and me coordinating it all and making sure that every single partner, and it's actually, things are getting done, things are becoming accomplished. And I think that having that person, like Ashley, like a coordinator for Envy, and having this individual that kind of gathers everyone together and gathers the data and keeps it going and and follows a strategic plan that is, you know, that is paid for, has to be the answer in order to keep all of the individuals from going back to their respective silos and doing whatever that they're going to do.
Right.
Well, and that's part of the abatement plan, would be a heroin coordinator.
A heroin coordinator.
I mean.
I mean, that's the point of the OPT meetings, though. And it, the ones that meet and meet with all entities at the table function very well, and I'll use Frederick as an example. You know, Frederick's community all works together, but their county is there, their business community is there. They're, you know, so if someone goes to treatment, goes into recovery, they need to work, right? So the business community has to rally around them and provide recovery-friendly workplaces, which is a a goal of the state. You know, if someone needs food, we need resources that are providing food. If someone needs an ID, we need resources that can help them get an ID. Like, everyone's gotta be at that table, and Frederick does that very well. Um, they have law enforcement there, they have medics there, um, they know who to call and who provides what.
Is that a task force?
We've met with their team, we've met with them numerous times, especially because they had the highest rate of contacts with individuals over after overdose, and we wanted to know how were they doing it? Because they have a team that works together, including parole and probation, law enforcement, um, the hospital. Like, all of them know where somebody is at any given time if they come up on that.
And I pitched that idea to the entities that have the outreach teams, and and we've talked about this, you're trying to do this, and I'm not getting that kind of response back from the other teams. They don't wanna participate. No, 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 you, let's say you guys.
I've been trying to create it for a while.
Yeah, I think it's important to know.
Call us and we'll respond.
Frederick County, Frederick County has taken a lead on that.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, even as a municipality, working as a municipality there, it is very clear that the county has taken a lead role.
It is the county.
You know, in those county operations and and and, uh, you know, give, do deference to Dr. Burton Meyer and and, you know, the staff there at the health department to like do that job in a cohesive, collective, county-directed fashion. That doesn't exist in this community at this time.
Uh, Secretary, I'm sorry.
And you need some critical, major influential, critical partners.
Amen.
And I agree, I agree with what you're saying, and I agree with what, uh, Councilwoman McIntyre's saying. But you still gotta have some incentivization, you still have to have something because you can't make people do it. You know, as a, as an agency head, obviously, this is down in our wheelhouse, we're invested. But like, you, you have to have agency heads, you have to have critical and major business leaders in the community. You've gotta have those people on board, because the community buy-in ultimately, and the community involvement engagement at all levels. Influential up here is gonna keep it moving, and the footwork's gonna happen down here, but you've gotta have that at the end of the day to keep a long, sustained, you know, plan, strategy, whatever we're gonna call it. Um, I agree, yes, coordinators, keep everyone together, but people still withdraw back into their silos.
Secretary Keller, with your work across the state, have, have you run into municipalities that have had to, um, you know, the municipality have to hire someone, or like what, um, Councilwoman McIntyre was saying, or task forces created? Like, uh, what is your, what has been the thing that you've seen that works across the state?
I mean, Baltimore City has a department, you know, specific, and their, their mayor is, um, launching like an overdose prevention team, but Baltimore City is obviously significantly different, and their population is significantly higher than here. Most of them go through the Vicky's of of the county. You know, that's, they take the lead and then they coordinate with the different entities, um, out.
But the counties are also heavily staffed compared to us.
Yes.
Like, they have deputies and everything else. Most of my positions in the state have a deputy director. So, but there are heroin coordinators throughout.
Yes.
The state.
And I could send you guys some information about, like, what each county is doing. It's on our website, which I don't know if I put on here, but stopoverdose.maryland.gov. Um, and our OPT surveys kinda outline what every county's doing. And honestly, Washington County leads the way as far as the programs. It's just now, how do we get everyone working together? Cuz I think we have more resources than people are aware of here, but it's that coordinating part that is difficult.
But I think that's a, that's part of our, our community culture, like, is to kind of work in these silos, and I think that that's something that we've just done. And, I mean, there's a lot of things that we do well and things that we don't do well. One of the things that we do do well is stay in what we call our own lane until it's time to get funding, and then we're all arguing and fighting about who's getting the funding. I haven't heard from Councilmember Perrini, I'm sorry, and, um.
Okay. Well, Mayor, I'll, I'll say the reason for that is, I know a lot of things about a lot of things, and this conversation is not one of them. And so, I've been taking it all in, and certainly will read the data. But since you called to me, I'll take this opportunity to thank Secretary Keller, um, and Health Officer Stoner, and all his team, and everybody else that works on this, who are the experts. And I'll just reiterate a comment that Councilman Alshire said, which is, you know, this is not an issue that's just gonna go away. And pointing fingers and kinda saying, they're to blame, whoever the, they are, um, isn't, isn't gonna help. So, um, it certainly is a societal challenge. I applaud the governor for seeing this, having the vision to stand up this cabinet-level position. And I think that, um, some of the comments that were just mentioned about who takes the lead in Frederick is very telling as why we, in this community, in this county, struggle, um, with what the chief just referred to, which is collective, uh, ambition to to tackle these issues. So, while I appreciate the offer to say, opportunity to say a few words, I am not the person to bring answers at the moment, uh, but it's certainly been a very enlightening, um, and important conversation. And, um, we're gonna talk about some things later on, so I'm about legislation and and working at the state. And I'm gonna talk to City Administrator Nice Warner, who works at the state level as well through the Maryland Municipal League, as to what additional resources that we might be able to, as as a group of municipalities, go to the state and say, you can't just put a little bit of dollars, I'm not, maybe that's not the right way of characterizing it, but you really, if you really wanna tackle this issue, you really have to put. you really have to put, as Secretary said, teeth in the legislation and you have to fund it. That's the bottom line.
Thank you, Councilmember.
If I could just add quickly too, because, you know, part of what our office did at the end of last year was go to all twenty-four jurisdictions. We spent time in every single county in Baltimore City. We met with treatment programs, we met with the health departments, the the P Ds, the fire departments, just kind of learn the landscape of every county, what's working, what's not. And I just want to reiterate, this is not a Hagerstown problem.
Right.
No, and I don't think the residents think that either.
Yeah.
Yeah, residents don't think that either.
Yeah.
We're here and it and it matters. I just don't, I think the public, a lot of times, we get so wrapped up in, because this is our community, it's all we see, and you're like, this isn't happening anywhere else in the state. It is.
Oh, it is.
And even the places that you you don't necessarily think it it's happening everywhere. And they are all facing the same issues and everyone is is struggling to figure out how to make it work. Overdose numbers are down in the state for the first time since two thousand nineteen, so we're trending in the right direction. Uh, but obviously there's a lot of work to do, but I just wanted, just wanted to say that, like, this isn't everyone problem. It's not just Hagerstown specific. You guys are not to blame, the elected body before you guys are not to blame, you know. This is a complex issue. The one before that wasn't to blame.
And she still gets to blame.
We're blaming that one.
Just, you, you, we are like at a good place and a privileged position because our numbers are going down. So I just printed out the data. So we're eighteen percent less if you do a year to your comparison. So I just print that off for you guys if you want.
Thank you.
Take a look.
Thank you for the important work that you do.
And I think I'd like to continue, if you all are okay, I'd like to continue the conversation with Earl and Vicky, David, Joey, Ashley, on on that potential N T F style group that doesn't explode into ninety-five people because every, you know, you you put ninety-four together and ninety-five is saying, why wouldn't I ask to be a part of this? Uh, but I think we need to identify those key, just like N T F, those key agencies that need to be involved and we start there. With a little bit of hammer to it, you know what I mean? Because if you don't have that hammer, everybody goes back and does their thing.
You guys have anything else?
There's, I think there's so much, but we would be here for all night.
I know, it is, it's a lot. It's necessary, so thank you.
Can I just say that for the opportunity to be here to let people know, because one thing, we got the image of the syringes that were collected on the Doyle Highway, that officer did not know that he could contact us to come out there and get them. So being able to give them, um, that knowledge to the community should make a difference, at least to some extent.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
And I also want to just, I mean, this has to be a priority. Like this has to be one of, if not our absolute top priority in the city. Our residents are concerned, we have people dying, there's a lot of homelessness going on. And whatever the city needs to contribute to, you know, not financially necessarily, but whatever we need to do to make this a collaborative and and effort, it just has to be.
And the politics has to.
The tide is now, the tide is now.
Because it's not politics.
Issue. We have just as many calls in the county.
Well, we can't.
I know, I'm just saying, like, they are welcome to join. But it is.
They're welcome to make it a priority too.
Maybe if we change our messaging to it's our problem, instead of your problem, to your problem.
That's good, Councilwoman.
It's our problem. We as a community need to solve it. It's not just up to you or you or you. So I'm 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 okay with spreading that messaging.
We have to play our part too.
But we gotta do our part and we can't pretend the issue doesn't exist.
Yeah, hundred percent.
And we can't leave it up to the social services organizations to, or law enforcement in particular. You know, it's, it's not, it's our problem. You're absolutely right. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
What a good one.
You had, you was at the beach. So you, that's what happens. All right. Next we have, uh, state and federal lobbyists for fiscal year twenty twenty-five and that's Scott Nice Warner, City Administrator and Mayor Councilmembers.
Just two things very quickly. We have our, uh, agreement with Compass Advocacy that does our state lobbying coming up the end of this month. Uh, it is about fifty-two thousand a year. The original intent with Compass was to advocate for us on behalf of the Field House funding. Now that that's gone, they all, well, I don't want to say it's gone, but now that it's not needed anymore. Uh, they did help, uh, Councilman Perrini and I, uh, work some things over the last legislative session beyond the Field House. So, um, I'd like to get a head nod that we be able to continue working with Compass through the next legislative session. And we've already talked with, uh, our lobbyists, um, Councilman Perrini and I, and we have developed a pretty nice list of of things to bring back to you, uh, in August to start this, to start generating hopefully some legislation with them. So this would just be a head nod for now, a vote, a regular session to continue the relationship with Compass.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Secondly, uh, Councilman Perrini has also talked about, uh, his, uh, interest in, uh, hiring a federal lobbyist. Uh, the process for that would be, we would put an R F P out, being that this is a new thing for us, we've never done this before.
Well, we have, you have.
We, we, yes, well, we have an R F P process now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have an R F P process that we would put out to try to go out and have lobbyists respond to us, uh, to do that work. It could be Compass, it could be another one, uh, but I'd just like to get a head nod from y'all that, uh, to put an R F P out to allow us to investigate hiring a federal lobbyist to work at the federal.
Can I say something real quick?
You bet.
I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, but we were at M M L and we were in one of those sessions and this, the senator that was speaking, Councilwoman, I feel like you was there with me, said that with the homeless problem and with the, um, over overdose and mental health, that no one was lobbying at a federal level, um, for those types of things. And he's like, all of the municipalities, all, you know, talk about the issues they have, but no one ever has, you know, sent someone on a federal level or a state level that to lobby about those things. I just wanted to drop that.
It's funny you say that. Yeah, we just found an article that was when we were looking at the homeless issue and it was, it was imperative that the municipalities have a federal lobbyist in order to help with that issue.
Right.
Wait, you were with, yeah, I feel like we were together at that and it was probably three years ago.
The National League of Cities.
Yeah, exactly. And that's, yeah, and and that is where, uh, we have a sample R F P, but I would also go to the National League of Cities with the contact I made down in the, or in Ocean City and talk with them about what their recommendations are. Utilize N L C the same way we utilize M M L on a state level. N L C will work with us on a federal level, but then also have that additional support from a federal lobbyist.
I think that's fantastic. And I think we should make those type of requests a priority when we put our list together for the federal lobbyists.
You got it.
Yep.
We will get that R F P started, hopefully get it back to you, uh, early August.
Great.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Okay. Um, next we have Stormwater Protection Fund rate study, Mr. Jim Bender, our city engineer. Wait, hi.
Good afternoon. Um, didn't give, didn't give Donna the information that David Vollebo from our partner W S P is here to make a presentation on the, uh, update to the, the rate model for the Stormwater Protection Fund. Just briefly, uh, council, um, decided to implement this fee in twenty, actually, we did it in twenty twenty. The fee didn't go into effect until twenty twenty-one. So it's been in effect for three years and it's just appropriate to get back and now look at the data we've collected over the past three years and see if we're doing the right thing, um, in our model and trying to make recommendations for what the rate should be going forward. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to David and you can swipe.
Perfect. All right. Uh, nice to see everybody. Um, I'm David Vollebo with W S P. Uh, we used to be Wood, uh, but it's a real pleasure to be here with you, uh, Mayor and members of City Council. Um, I was actually part of the original team, uh, that worked with the city back in two thousand eighteen as you were just starting to think about your stormwater protection fee. And so really glad to have been brought back, um, tonight to look at your your rate model and, uh, give you an update on what the findings were as we were going into that. As far as the presentation, um, this evening, I just wanted to hit on a couple highlights. I'm going to go really fast and then please feel free to stop me, uh, if if I go too fast, you have questions or if I start spitting out acronyms.
I just want to make sure that the city clerk has this presentation. Okay, thank you.
Great. So I just wanted to start with a little bit more of a brief background, provide some context and then talk about the two thousand nineteen, uh, cost and rate models that were the basis for your your current fee structure. And then go into the two thousand twenty-four, uh, rate model analysis and just some of the the key review factors that we went over on with, uh, your finance and your Department of Public Works personnel and then the bottom line, which is what are the results of of that rate estimation analysis? And again, of course, if you have any questions at the end, I'm more than happy to do that. Just, uh, again, for background, um, so when you started to consider this back in two thousand eighteen, there were, there were really three primary drivers, uh, for that conversation. The first one was the Chesapeake Bay T M D L requirements in your M S four permit. And so that requirement to, uh, be able to treat twenty percent of your untreated impervious cover was a really big one. That equates to about two hundred and eighty-seven football fields, so no small task. Uh, requires a lot of capital infrastructure in order to be able to do that. Uh, one of the sleeper issues that staff was facing was, um, how to maintain oversight of your private stormwater management system, right? And so, uh, the City of Hagerstown has had in stormwater management requirements for long enough that you actually have a lot of private infrastructure that's out there. And so that's privately owned, operated and maintained. Uh, M D E and E P A have really ramped up expectations as far as the city in terms of inspecting that, trust but verify, and then also enforcing if necessary. And so that's an additional staff burden that we were seeing. And then finally was the big issue of your aging stormwater management infrastructure. And so Hagerstown being, um, uh, a historic community, um, has a lot of areas where the infrastructure is over a hundred years old. And so that results in either undersized infrastructure that can cause spot flooding or deteriorating infrastructure. And so there was a lot of interest in shifting to, um, a proactive management strategy rather than maintenance by emergency, which is how it often occurs. Um, it's more cost efficient for the long term, but it also requires an infusion of cash upfront in order to be able to make that paradigm shift. And so this is just kind of an example with respect to that last part. So this is Pennsylvania Avenue flooding, this is, uh, undersized infrastructure. This, this is what people see and, uh, get some interested in things like stormwater because usually they are not, uh, until they get flooded. Uh, but quite honestly, the things that.
That picture's not in the county anyway.
Oh, is that the county?
Sorry. If you're watching on television.
This, this one is in the city. Um, and so this is broken clay pipe. Uh, so this is the stuff that keeps your your city staff, uh, up at night. Uh, that's old pipe, um, and that's eventually going to collapse and and cause, uh, damage to infrastructure. Um, there was also discussion or interest at the time, uh, in an opportunity to shift how the city, uh, dealt with the cost for replacing and rehabilitating curb and gutter as well as sidewalk. And so as, as you all know, up until recently, that was a responsibility of your adjoining property, uh, owner. Um, that was kind of unique, um, not a lot of other localities do that. Uh, and creates an issue, uh, again, for a lot of property owners when they're faced with that big expense. Um, the opportunity here is that curb and gutter is actually part of your stormwater management system. And so if you changed, uh, the way that you were funding stormwater to a fee structure, uh, that actually can be a legitimate part of your stormwater management program. Uh, and quite frankly, there are two other issues in terms of economies of scale. Doing it piecemeal costs a lot more money than than the city being able to take care of that. And then city staff was spending a lot of time walking residents through the process of being able to update this. And that was also costing a lot of money.
No, I, I, I can just back real quick. Just, so there's obviously curb and gutter and sidewalk adjacent to city streets or any streets that are in the city, um, that are public right of ways. But what about curb and gutter on private property that does feed into and has drained into, you know, the city's stormwater management system? Is that something that we should be considering as well? Or are we only worried about curb and gutter sidewalks on basically the streets that the city intends?
Yeah, I think that that's, the intent is to make, to use the funds that are raised by the stormwater protection fee to take care of issues within the right of way. Um, the private curb that's out there, private storm drainage pipes is not something that the city was looking to, to, to fund with this program.
And and generally, if you look at other municipalities, uh, they they don't cover private operation and maintenance of stormwater infrastructure.
Okay.
Um, so just a little bit about the process, and I know a lot of you, uh, went through the very exciting process of the stormwater protection fee. Uh, we started phase one, which included very robust, uh, stormwater advisory committee where they dove into what is the city currently doing, uh, what are the long-term program needs, what are the costs? What's the delta between those two? And then ultimately, if you agreed with what that new program should look like, how do you equitably pay for, um, that program? That resulted in a report to City Council in November two thousand eighteen, uh, with a recommendation to go with a fee approach. Uh, phase two included, uh, continued S A C engagement, refinement of that program and then consideration of potential rate structures. And that report, uh, came to the City Council in December two thousand nineteen. And actually, that is, uh, the meeting, uh, where, uh, we presented a rate estimation, uh, chart, which was the formation of your initial, uh, stormwater, uh, rate, um, that was adopted in two thousand twenty. Um, so a couple other just really quick basics. Um, so again, you have a lot of flexibility, but there is enabling authority that provides a bit of a structure towards stormwater utilities, like the one that Hagerstown adopted. Uh, importantly, the revenue has to be used for stormwater management purposes. So it is an enterprise fund and it's very specific with respect to the kinds of things that could be covered, uh, under the stormwater utility. Um, it does also say that there has to be a nexus between, uh, the fee, the charge methodology, um, and, um, the benefits to the program. And so in your case, like most other localities, you chose impervious area as kind of the surrogate for how you're going to charge. And so that's where your, um, billing unit of a thousand square feet of impervious area came from. And then by state law, and again, you have a lot of flexibility for this, you have to have a system of credits in place uh, for people who, uh, own, operate and maintain, uh, private stormwater management facilities that actually control or treat stormwater. And so your, your program has all of those different elements in it. So the two thousand twenty program cost assumptions, um, that we, uh, worked to develop that rate structure from, um, had a couple of different pieces to that. And so it's important to recognize, uh, that all stormwater-related activities were switched over to being paid for by the stormwater protection fee. So there are localities where they just say, hey, we're going to leave part of it in general fund, um, and only fund the new stuff through the fee. Uh, Hagerstown, uh, made the decision that it was going to be both existing and new. Um, and so there was actually a relief to the general fund as a, as a result of that transfer. Uh, it picked up the cost of curb and gutter. Um, it also, um, estimated the capital needs or capital costs for meeting those Chesapeake Bay T M D L retrofit requirements by the year, uh, or fiscal year thirty. And you might be thinking to yourself, well, the fiscal year thirty is different than what he just said a few minutes ago, uh, that the deadline is fiscal year twenty-five. Um, we actually worked with M D E, uh, to be able to utilize some of your extra credits that you had for, um, nutrient reductions from your wastewater treatment facility in order to be able to kind of bridge that gap. And so what it did is that they, you couldn't use it in perpetuity, but they said, hey, you've got enough credits where you can have that extra five years to be able to ramp up your program at a more reasonable pace. And so that actually worked out really nicely in order to not have to ramp up so fast that it was impossible to be able to come up with those capital costs. It also included, uh, beginning, uh, closed circuit T V-ing your drainage infrastructure to be able to get a better sense of what the condition of that infrastructure looked like and where some of your choke points were in terms of undersized infrastructure. And then we put in placeholder funding to cover things that you might find as a result of, uh, that C C T V effort. And so I think we've put in about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year, which might be enough, might not be enough, but it seemed reasonable to have something in place, um, as as we assessed the system. And then that bottom piece in there is that it. we assessed the system. And then that bottom piece in there is that it assumes $1 million in bonds annually for capital projects, right? And so again, even though we were able to stretch this out till fiscal year 30, it still was ramping up pretty quickly. And that makes it tough if you're cash financing. And so it anticipated that you'd have about $1 billion or $1 million in bonds each year in order to be able to moderate your costs and not have to jump up too high. This is the rate model that we came in 2019. Please do not try to read it. It's put up there just so you get the sense that there is a sophisticated rate model that takes all the inputs. And then we fine tune that and come up with the bottom part, which is the most important. So when we came to you all in December 2019, the initial rate recommendation was $32 for billing unit. And then that would slowly and incrementally increase over time until you got to 20 or fiscal year 30, where it would be $50 per billing unit. So that was what we initially anticipated was necessary in order to be able to sustain the program. These are just a couple of examples of projects that have been put in place as a result of the fee. If you're interested in details, Jim is in the best position to talk about them or also anything to deal with how far we've gotten along with the Chesapeake Bay TMDL requirements. But this is one example of a Chesapeake Bay TMDL credit project. So stream restoration at the greens at Hamilton Run. This is kind of a more traditional stormwater management retrofit at Hellcrest Road. And then this is just an infrastructure project, drainage improvements at Morningside Heights. So just some good examples. For the rate study, again, this is a fee for service under state law. And so just like any utility or enterprise fund, it's really important to review those rates periodically to ensure that there remains that nexus between the fee and the program it supports. As far as our review is concerned, so we worked very closely with Public Works and Finance to update both actual expenditures as well as projected costs and also assumptions. And so categories that we went through were financial assumptions, so benefits, inflationary factors, delinquencies, billing units. And so we anticipated you're going to increase impervious cover over time. And so that results in more billing units, personnel and direct costs. So both anticipated versus actual costs, capital costs, which is the big driver, other revenue. And so remember that it's not just the stormwater fee that has revenue. You've also got permit fees, you've got grants, you've got bonds. And in fact, there was ARPA money involved, which helped to offset some of that, some of that cost. And then credits, again, looking at anticipated versus actual. And so once we ran those numbers, we were able to update the cost model. So what is your program going to cost through fiscal year 30? A couple of key takeaways from that. So operating costs were actually very much in line with what we had initially anticipated back in 2019, almost eerily in line. What was interesting is that there were lower personnel costs and higher direct expenses when we dug into that. That's because we had a shift from direct personnel hires for DPW to actually them covering a percent of staff through an allocation as a direct expense. But by and large, it was pretty close. And then we also looked at other adjustments based on actual costs. The two other items, there was a longer ramp up in terms of spending capital dollars. A lot of that was COVID related. You probably can't see it all that well up on the board there, but you'll note that there is a big jump in FY '25 as projects that have been backlogged go from design to implementation. So while it had a slower start fiscal year '25, you're seeing a spike with respect to the actual implementation of these projects. And so that's noteworthy. And there was also a delay in implementing the CCTV program until fiscal year '25. And so that's going to get moving along this year.
Right. And part of that delay for the CCTV was that at one point, we thought that Columbia Gas was going to be coming to town and basically do the same thing for our storm drain system.
We just talked about that.
And they have not ramped up as quickly. You know, we were sort of delaying our effort to do that. I think now we're just going to go ahead, do it, get our RFP out, get somebody, a contractor, looking at our pipe system.
Didn't we give them an easement or something? Did we vote on that last month or two months ago?
Yeah, we've had various easement agreements with them. I don't think it was related to the camera work.
Did you get into the pipes to do this?
Wasn't, not recently, no.
So a couple other significant changes, and I'll end with the biggest. So first billing units. So your number of billing units actually increased much faster than we had anticipated. That's because of annexations where areas with large amounts of impervious cover. And so you could see, we had anticipated that there would only be 91,000 some odd billing units back in 2019 for fiscal year '24. And that number is actually 95,000. And that's expected to continue to grow faster than expected, at least for the next couple of years. Inflationary pressure, so higher retirement and health costs. Credits were lower than expected. And so that's about $75,000 less per year. That's not surprising. We usually are conservative when we estimate credits, just in case more people come in and take advantage of that program. But by and large, we find that fewer people take advantage of the credit program than originally anticipated. And then the final one, and this is the biggest, is shifting from bond to cash financing. And so again, as you recall, we originally assumed that we would rely on bonds for capital projects, about $1 million per year. That delay in some of those capital projects actually wound up to your benefit because it allows you to shift to cash financing. And so what we've been able to construct is a cash reserve that you can use over time to moderate the increases in rates. And so it's a amount that's now been permanently put into the rate model. And if you need a little extra money one year for capital, you could dip into that. If you've got a little extra money one year, you could add back into that cash reserve. But it helps to serve as a nice moderator and also saves you that money in terms of bond placement costs. We do still have a couple of significant uncertainties just to keep in mind. So we don't know what the next MS4 permit will necessarily hold in terms of whether it'll go beyond that 20% requirement for treating untreated impervious cover. And then we also will be seeing what the CCTV reveals about the conveyance system and rehabilitation needs. And so again, hopefully, we'll be on the mark, but it could be better or it could be a lot worse, and that might affect the bottom line accordingly. And so again, another pretty spreadsheet that you're not going to be able to read from where you are, but it just goes to show that, you know, we do go through some pretty sophisticated rate calculation. The bottom line though is on in the red, and I'll skip here and just go ahead and compare this for you. So we are actually about where we thought we ought to be for fiscal year '24 in terms of where the rates were to be at. However, the good news is that whereas in 2019, where we expected the rates would need to continue to increase through fiscal year 30 up to that $50 mark, again, that cash reserve and its ability to moderate and not require bonding allows you to actually stabilize the rate at fiscal year '26 at $38 and keep that flat through fiscal year '30 and being in relatively good shape. So that's kind of the bottom line, is that for a variety of factors, you know, our recommendation at this point is, you know, continue to go up to 38 in fiscal year '26. Of course, continue to do rate studies as new information comes through, especially with the MS4 permit and CCTV. But you should be able to moderate that at a flat $38 through fiscal year '30. And that's it. That a mayor.
How much, how many square feet in a billing unit?
We operate studies.
1,000 square feet. So you're anticipating that the number of billing units, the square footage, is an additional 3 million square feet through the annexations? That seems low to me.
Well, I'd say it's not just the annexations. The other thing that happened after 2019 is we had the warehouse development on Vaiso Boulevard, and we had the Kerwood warehouses that had big chunks of impervious area very quickly.
So now it seems really low to me. It was low before. Now, now 3 million square feet seems really low based on the development that's occurred, including annexations, including in the city limits since 2019.
Well, we are, we are constantly updating that number. You know, as these annexations become effective, we add them into the system and monitor them.
Yeah. And it is expected to increase abnormally more than we had originally anticipated, I think for the next three or four years, correct Jim?
Yeah.
I do have a question. These tables in here, were they the tables that were shared up on the screen or in this packet?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Very good presentation. You guys have any questions? Asha?
So the total acreage is like 397?
Yes.
So in ballpark figures, where would you say we are with that?
Well, I'm just in the process of doing our annual report for the last year. Those are due in October. And so I'd need to update the accounting because there are, there are a couple of projects, especially the golf course project gets us a lot of bang for our buck. And we're doing some tree planting as well. So I would say that we've probably knocked off in the, just in the past year, close to 45 acres off of the total. And I'd have to go back and look to see accounting wise where we started from, where we are now.
That's just for that period?
Yeah, just for that year.
Prior to that.
Right.
Anybody else? You guys? Questions? Comments? Good set. Sound good?
I'm going to say I need to digest this a little bit more.
Okay.
I'm going to look for Tom to get us a copy of the presentation.
Okay.
And I may have further questions. Is that's all right?
Okay. Well, thank you.
The table's clearing that original.
I tried to go like this, like I had an iPad.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Can I have a water and a set of readers at every?
Water and reading and a set of readers?
Yeah.
2024 package of land management code, LNC amendments. Kathleen Moore, Director of Planning and Code Administration, and Stephen Park Miller, zoning administrator. No Kathy.
Well, she's back there.
She's got my back.
All right.
Well, after all that, I'm here to dazzle you with text amendments.
Oh, goodness. You don't have to say it like that.
I'm going to keep it brief. You're going to have a public hearing coming up later in the month. We do this pretty much once a year unless there's some sort of emergency amendment that needs to be made. We compile all of the proposals that we gather over the course of a year and then do it at one time due to complexities in amending the ordinance, legal advertisements, et cetera. So what I'm here to do is to brief you on the package. There are 16 proposals. I'm going to go over them very briefly. I'm going to use the PowerPoint program that we will have for the public hearing. But I'm going to kind of really kind of breeze over a lot of it. But if you have specific questions, you can, you can ask me again. This is the land management codes, this is the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, forest conservation, and floodplain ordinances all together make the land management code. And we do this once a year for efficiency purposes. One of the things I also have a policy of doing is letting you know what a summary of the net result is. In this particular package, we have six proposals, loosening requirements, five tightening requirements. One is a combination of tightening and loosening. And then four are just administrative corrections and adjustments. And like I said, I'm going to go over these briefly. The first one is a couple of adjustments to the subdivision ordinance that encourages the use of small traffic islands instead of stop signs in new residential subdivisions. They can be designed within the right of way widths that we require for new subdivision streets. This example down on Reynolds Avenue is an example of that. A lot of that was retrofitted to an old street. Also, the second thing is we're looking to tighten up the regulations when it comes to cul-de-sacs, when they have a landscaped island inside of them. We're finding that the current, the ones that have been designed in the recent past, if you have cars parked around the outside edges of it, it's hard for the snowplows and the emergency equipment to use them. So it doesn't eliminate them, it just requires them to be able to be designed in a way where they accommodate the emergency equipment and snowplows. We have a proposal 2024-03, basically requires, puts in the ordinance that requires people who have parking lots to keep maintaining their striping over years, the striping your roads, and then it becomes difficult for people to understand where they're supposed to go or park, lane arrows, et cetera. And also creates a process where if you have a parking lot that's so old, we don't have a site plan for it, then we work together with the applicant to come up with a striping plan for their existing paved surface. So we have a base to go from from there on. We also have a minor administrative adjustment to the definition of child daycare. It basically is needed to clarify between an in-home daycare operation and a commercial or institutional operation. This came up due to some recent conversations of somebody who wanted to operate a rather large daycare business from their home in a subdivision. Proposal number five-
What is defined as rather large?
I think she wanted like about 12 kids or so in her, in her house, if I remember correctly.
So there are state daycare licensure requirements that already define various sizes.
Yes.
Is this going to be in conjunction with that?
Yes. On proposal number five, right now in our downtown zoning district, we have very limited regulations. I wouldn't say limited, restrictive regulations on freestanding signs. There aren't a whole lot of places in the downtown where you can even have one because most of the half buildings are built right up to the street. But we did receive an overture from someone who wants to do a large one on a property that has a lot of road frontage and a lot of open space. And we thought it would be good to loosen the regulations by coming up with a special exception process to allow for these on a limited basis. Another one that's come up as far as loosening our sign regulations is historically, Hagerstown had large projecting signs on buildings. Currently, they're prohibited in our ordinance. The only, there used to be a lot of them. If you look at the old mid 20th century photographs of our downtown, the only one I can think of that remains today is the Shaki Building sign that's still there. But those used to be commonplace in the downtown. And this came up with our Historic District Commission asking, why don't we allow these? Because most of the architecture in our historic district in our downtown is mid 20th century, why not go back to that? So these proposals are, allow for large projecting signs with certain zoning limitations on them in our downtown. Also, we are looking to amend our current provisions for marquees for public entertainment venues to allow, essentially it's an exemption. There's a lot of latitude written into them for marquees. This came about with the Maryland Theater. But we're finding places like Hub City Vinyl where they have a performance venue, but it's a building that was not built as a theater. Why shouldn't they be able to have some sort of marquee? So we're loosening the regulations on marquees on public entertainment venues. Proposal number eight is dealing with recreational vehicles parked in residential areas. This was before you, a couple of years ago, there was concerns with the way it was written. We laid off of it for a year. We're back with some proposals that we think address the concerns that came up a couple of years ago. Number nine-
Sorry, on that one. Are you talking about on private property or on the city streets?
On private property, yes.
So you're going to tell people what they can park on their private property?
We get complaints occasionally from people because keep in mind that a large percentage of the homes in the city are on very small lots. The houses are very close to property lines. So you could have somebody with a bedroom window that's three feet from their neighbor's driveway, and then they're going to park a 12-foot tall, 40-foot long camper three feet from the neighbor's window and block their, their ability to use their own property.
Steve, what's the basic standard that's flexible for larger properties?
Basic standard is, before the regulation was saying that, or the proposal was that you couldn't have them in your- you couldn't have them in your front yard at all. Now, if you have a larger property, basically all it has to do is comply with the same front building setback department as a, as a house would. So if you have a, a property that has a sixty, seventy-foot deep front yard, all you have to do is keep it at least twenty, in a, our MOD zoning district where the front setback's twenty-five feet, you just gotta keep it twenty-five feet away from the street.
Kristen, that was a big, that was a big thing that we had talked about for a long time. Have you read this? Do you have any feedback on it?
I mean, I have a feedback on a number of these. On this one specifically, I believe it also still indicates though that you have to meet the side yard requirements for an accessory structure, right?
Yes.
Which means, and I use my case, my neighbor's house is twelve to fifteen feet away. We have driveways in between us. So you know what I mean? It's my house, then a driveway, then driveway, then the neighbor's house. So what you're saying is, in my specific case, I couldn't park that on the one side of my driveway because it would not meet the side yard setbacks that an accessory dwelling in it would. Or an accessory, accessory building would. Because I don't know what the setbacks are for accessory structure. I'm guessing three or six feet.
Four feet, yeah.
Which doesn't, like I said, again.
Is your.
I've been there for fifteen years and his boat sits right next to my camper in two side driveways that are on our respective property lines.
Is this your neighbor's property, a flag-stem lot?
No, we have two properties side by side.
Right.
We both have big driveways. And right here, where our driveway's me, my camper sits and his boat sits. And then our houses sit on the opposing sides of the driveways. So in this case, we would both have to move those structures four feet into the driveway. Which doesn't, again, it, it, I, I don't, I, I could see it, and I said at the time, that any changes to this should give some due consideration to the height of the recreational vehicle as it does the ordinance itself. In other words, if my camper were twelve feet tall, which is a large camper, larger than average, you know what I mean? I could see that condition, but it's not. It's actually less than the height of your average SUV, no differently than his boat. You know what I mean? So if it were, if both items were tall, then they should be some deference given, which I thought was gonna happen in this, but that is not what occurred.
What we could do is after you have, take your public testimony, if there's some tweaks we need to make to this before you adopt it, we could look at making some minor adjustments to address that concern.
I think the height issues are a concern. You know what I mean? A full fifth wheel is much different than somebody's pop-up.
Or a Class A.
Right, or a Class A is much different than, you know, somebody's boat. Or a set of jet skis or whatever.
Is there, is there, because your driveway, you have a long driveway. Like, it goes, your driveway is like not close to the street.
That's right. So the front's not an issue.
Yeah.
And I get it if we both had like, you know, if you had a twelve-foot tall camper and I had a set of jet skis, I just don't see them as being the same item because the height's really the issue that depletes or degrades, you know, that visible or, you know, respect it.
And we, we could, we could look at, we could look at tweaking that.
That is certainly kind of parsing the issue. I'm gonna tell you, my personal issue is, that's private property. And now we're telling people what they can and can't do with their private property. And if somebody bought a house and now they bought a house, they moved in and said, now I don't want my neighbor to do this or that, so we're gonna get rules changed. I have a really significant problem with that.
Well, what if, what if the person moved in and brought their camper with them and the established person who was there first has a concern? For example, the illustration that we use.
If they bought a house, it's, and that's as you're, you're just, you're suggesting a few minutes ago was that it's blocking the view from the house. They bought a house that the house is sitting right on the property line or within a couple of feet of the property line? There should have been an, an understanding that that's not their property.
I feel like it's almost that age-old argument, do you wanna live in an HOA or don't you? You know what I mean? Like, that's something you would like apply to a neighborhood that has an HOA versus, I don't live in a neighborhood that has an HOA because I don't want to abide by those more stringent HOA directives.
We do get complaints about this stuff from time to time.
I'm sure.
But we don't have anything in the ordinance right now that protects even the most off-the-charts types of examples. There's one example, we went, I went around and looking, looking for examples of these around the community, in and outside, inside and outside of the city. And I found one where somebody had a forty-foot long, one of those huge, I guess they call them Class A, I'm not familiar with the terminology, campers. They lived on a corner lot, they had it in there literally right up to the stop sign and the public sidewalks at the intersection. So without something on the books, we could get some pretty absurd kind of circumstances that if we don't have anything on the books, we have no control over.
The stop sign is on private property?
The stop sign is at the intersection within the street right of way. But basically this, this camper is in the front yard and the side yard along this, on this, on the side street, within, literally within feet of, of the stop sign.
A perfect example too of, one is right there on North Avenue, right there on the corner, before you get to Park Place, there's a camper that is sitting in the back of the yard, all, almost in the street. It's in horrible condition, looks like someone's partly living in there. And yeah, it is your property, right? Like, that's your property and you should be able, but you're also, you know, right up against multiple other people's property for something like, and that camper is, I mean, it's just sitting there.
To, to add to that, Councilmember Brandy, to your point, I, I agree. I, I'm not a big one on, you know, telling people to do with their own property, but we have like the external building ordinance, right, like a shed. You can have a shed right up against the, the property line, right? For the, kind of the same reason, some of them isn't built a big old shed right next to your side window, your house.
Or setbacks and so.
Right, so I, I see it as that.
But the example given here is a trailer in the driveway.
I don't, I mean, does a couple complaints really warrant us to make the, like this change? I mean, this has been a topic many times, this particular thing. I mean, does a couple complaints really warrant us to be like, oh, we need to make this rule in this land?
I think it needs more than a couple, but I do think there is a.
And I think I don't have a problem with that picture because it's setback from the street.
Yeah.
That particular picture, it's about five feet from the sidewalk.
That's what I'm saying, I don't, I don't have an issue because it's in their driveway. It's not impeding the sidewalk, it's not impeding line of sight.
Well, let me just summarize this and I, I don't wanna belabor it, but move on. When the planning commission discussed this two years ago and this year, there was a lot of wrestling with it. But then we had, we provided them photographs of various examples again in and out, in and out of the city. And then we asked the members of the commission, if you were looking to buy a house and you were going around with your real estate agent and you saw this next door, would you even consider buying that house? And even the ones that are critical or had concerns with it said, yeah, I wouldn't wanna buy that house.
I was on the planning commission at that time and I was one that said that I would buy the house. So, just to clarify. Just to make sure. To decide, like if that doesn't work for you, then go to another house.
That, that's, that's the problem I have is a lot of it's out of your control. If you've got a home and somebody parks a giant massive one and, and it's right, not, this one's not a great example, but it's right against the side of your building, it's right against your side of your house.
Do, do people.
What we're looking at here is the larger of recreational. I wanna make sure we understand, we're talking about recreational vehicles, not just big campers. We're talking about boats and jet skis and, you know, a trailer with four-wheelers on it. Those types of recreational vehicles.
Yep.
And so I just, I have a hard time putting all of them in that single group.
I agree.
When seventy-five percent of them aren't this example.
Right.
The height is the issue.
That's fair.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fair.
Well, we, we can look at trimming it after you have your.
In other words, if somebody can have a, a six-foot high fence there, like, you know, then if the boat isn't more than six feet higher, the camper isn't more than six feet higher, then to me that isn't much difference. You get above eight feet, then I think that there should be some additional setbacks to limit the impact that that has on the neighboring property as it applies.
The two sides of this are, as Councilman Brandy mentioned, you have the right to do with what you want your prop, with your property. The alternative is, do those people who live in that house that's behind the camper have the right to look out their front window and look down the street?
Have they complained? These people?
This particular situation is not associated with a complaint, that's just one that we happen to arrive with.
So, so what would, would be a suggestion for the camper that's sitting in the community that is just in, you know, like, and it's on someone's property? It looks like it's, I don't know if it's functioning, I think Captain and I seen it and checked it out a little bit. Like, what would be the suggestion there? Because that's the property, but there's, that's also a huge eyesore and could be a safety hazard.
Well, I like the, I like the conditions added here, which I think addresses probably a lot of that, which it has to be properly tagged, right? Has to be readily road, uh, uh, has to be, you know, road-ready. It can't be lived in, it's gotta be on a solid surface. It can't be just sinking into the grass in the backyard. You know what I mean? Like, those conditions you've already added into your, into this are going to address, you know, those.
Things like that.
Yeah, those issues. And then if you ensure that there's some setback from the public right-of-way and that there is some, you know, applicability of height, you know, commensurate with, with, with additional setback from the side, then I think that that's reasonable.
And, and we do all of that with the exception of the last one, which we could probably make some adjustments to once you have your hearing.
Okay.
Can you help me with the process? Wouldn't we approve things to go to a hearing? Wouldn't the council approve things to go to a hearing?
To what hearing?
To a public hearing.
Like, wouldn't these be, wouldn't our changes now before the public hearing? Or do we need to hear from the public also to make the changes?
Yeah, well, yeah, before you, is what the planning commission has recommended.
To go to a hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have to go through here first?
Right, once you have the hearing, you can make any changes that you like.
Because then you have the benefit of the public hearing, should there be any suggested changes from the public.
Okay.
I don't, I don't understand.
Can you explain it better for Councilwoman Brandy, because he doesn't understand?
Why wouldn't the council approve anything that goes to public hearing? And then address with the public issue after the public hearing? Then why does, other than just letting us know what you're doing, why, why isn't there an approval process at the council level before a public hearing?
Valid question.
Because this is the package that's been recommended to you to have public hearing on.
So if we say no, don't, don't do it? Is that how it, is that how it stops?
After the public hearing?
No, before the public hearing.
Historically, no.
What the heck?
Historically, no, because we have the right to change. I see what you're saying. Like, why wouldn't we make the changes prior and then this is what the council is considering? And then, I, I see what you're saying.
Because a public hearing, I would think by definition is this is what your city is proposing.
But now we're thinking about making changes, I see.
Let me ask a question and maybe clarify this for me, what, what everybody's asking. If, goes to public hearing, but the public doesn't have any comment on the amendments. We say no, we want X, Y, Z changed.
Yeah.
Then does that have to go to public hearing again?
If it's minor, no.
If you add things that have not gone to a hearing, then you would have to go back.
So in this instance, if we added a height requirement to this, this particular piece, for example, and we said, okay, well, this only applies to things over six feet tall, what have you, would that then have to go back to public hearing?
I'd say if it's less restrictive, if we could do that administratively. Yeah, I mean, if, even if it is adding something new, but it's designed to replace something that you don't like and it's less restrictive, I think we'd be all right with that. Yeah, but in my twenty-plus years here, the process has always been, this is what the recommendation is. You have your public hearing and then you decide what you wanna do with it.
So our policy is, we've always done it that way?
That's not what he said. He just said it in the last twenty years, for the last twenty years.
What it's allowing you to do is get the place commission recommendation. You get the public hearing, should the public hearing, would, would they have any suggestions? And then it comes back to the body to decide based upon all of that information what you want to do with, with the, with the amendment.
Well, it was like two years ago that this RV stuff was pulled because the council was not comfortable with it. But they said, keep tweaking and come back in the future.
And it didn't go to public, I believe it went to public hearing. And then after the public hearing, you all said, don't do it. And we pulled.
Councilmember, before you go.
Yeah.
Just before you go.
Yeah.
He has to leave.
He has to leave, he has another meeting.
Yeah. The, the, the most substantive thing is obviously where I won't vote for anything associated with cannabis.
Okay. Where the numbers are.
So whether you wanna include this as a package, if it is a whole package, I'm just gonna, you know, across the whole thing. That's just me.
These are not undivorceable from one another. Once you have your public hearing, if you say, okay, we're gonna adopt one, two, four, seven, whatever, I mean, you can pull any, any one of the things out once, once you give us direction of what you want to adopt.
Which one is that? That is, I think.
Fourteen?
Land Management Code text amendment, proposal, cannabis incubator, cannabis, or CBD and hemp stores. That's the one where the state has made the changes, right?
Number sixteen, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Just, yeah.
Okay.
Now, it's not an all-or-nothing kind of thing. You can pull individual proposals out and say, okay, we're gonna adopt these thirteen of the fifteen and just leave the other ones out. We would move forward with that.
Probably the majority, though, that are okay with cannabis.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, and I'll be real quick on this. We're closing a few loopholes on requirements for screening certain uses in our commercial and industrial districts, which have a potential to have negative impacts on adjoining other types of commercial or residential uses. Twenty ten, twenty-four-ten require on-site parking for outdoor seating over incidental accessory use and explain how parking requirements are administered. This is really two, really quick two parts. We had a business that had a limited amount of indoor seating. They decided they were gonna have a large outdoor area, which would just completely blow out their parking issues. We hadn't really been, been, it hasn't been an issue in the past, but it did come up recently. So we're looking to provide some parking requirements for outdoor seating when your outdoor seating area is actually gonna be a lot more than what we would require for your indoor. Up to this point, we've never calculated outdoor seating into parking requirements because usually it's been very incidental, but not in this one particular case. Also, we codify in the ordinance what the requirement is on when parking, parking is, requirements are necessary. It's not changing anything, it's the way it's been for thirty years. It's just, it's never been explained in the ordinance. So we, we spell that out in the ordinance. Eleven, permit existing non-residential buildings in the CG to be converted into mixed use to include residential commercial uses subject to performance standards. Right now, we do allow new construction of mixed-use buildings in the CG. And, but it's gotta be on a minimum lot size. And what we're doing here is we're also allowing them to go to, existing buildings could be converted and also shrinking the requirement for the, the lot area, or I believe actually eliminating it for new buildings as well. And a lot of this is to deal, deal with two things. We're finding that there's starting to become a market on this type of, of, of housing, kind of like lifestyle centers, where you can go downstairs and get a cup of coffee, but you have apartments upstairs. And we are seeing overtures and inquiries about this type of use in our commercial zoning districts. Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are adding and eliminating certain uses from certain districts. Eliminates quadruplexes and triplexes in the RMed due, due to issues with comparable zoning in the county to smooth annexations. We add four new uses by right and one by special exception in the CR. And then also we remove the term substance abuse from the descriptions of hospitals since other amendments made this redundant and could create confusion. You had a lengthy conversation earlier about this whole issue. This does not change anything in the ordinance, it's simply housekeeping. We do have a language in the ordinance that says where drug treatment centers can be located, but then we have this redundancy in the, in the description of hospitals. We're just eliminating the confusion. Number fifteen, amend provisions for alternate living units, small group homes and small halfway houses. What we're finding is, we're getting some people asking, well, can I do small group homes in, in each of the apartment units of an apartment building? And that would just kind of blow the building apart as far as occupancy goes. So it does tighten that up a little bit. And also, as the one that Councilmember Ashire had a concern with, there are certain changes to the state cannabis rules. And what we're doing is we're amending our ordinance to be in compliance with those state laws.
So on that one, what's the blue?
The blue are in. The blue are in, in your packet. The blue is just narrative instruction. It's not part of a change. It's, if it's black and it stays black, it's text that's not gonna change. If it's struck through, that means it goes away. Red is new language. So blue is just notes to you all explaining what we're doing.
Commentary.
So this note is, says staff recommended deleting indoor plant cultivation processing facilities from blah, blah, blah zones.
Okay, John.
In, uh, sixteen. And I'd like a clarification on that, cause it's been my understanding that the state law specifically prohibits municipalities and jurisdictions from doing just that.
No, you can set up reasonable expectations for where you want.
That's not my understanding. My understanding is it doesn't already exist for, is it alcohol sales? Or something? You can't prohibit anything beyond that.
This is growing in processing.
This is growing processing, not distribution.
Dispensaries are different.
Not dispensaries.
Yeah.
You're thinking dispensaries.
This is for growing and processing.
I thought it applied across the board.
No. No, growing, if, this was just, uh, dispensaries that that was associated with.
And part of the recommended change here is to add alcohol sale stores into the same category as dispensaries so that you're not discriminating against the two. They're treated exactly the same.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then lastly, uh, make the conversion, this is an administrative thing, make the conversion district overlay consistent with the local conversion. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we removed the requirement that additions in the local conversion had to be on a part of the building least visible from the public. That was because Dr. Ekman wanted to put a small addition on the front of his building up on Cypress Street. And going through the ordinance, we realized that the same provision is retained in the conversion district overlay. And we thought, well, we could have a local conversion. Why not take it out of? And it makes, uh, more flexibility for people if they wanna come in for a conversion overlay for a larger building. So it's, we're just trying to make the two consistent and more flexible. And that's all we have. And what we have is a public hearing, uh, scheduled for July twenty-third. And then, uh, if all goes according to plan in August, you'll have your discussion on rec, uh, on what you would, uh, actually want to see adopted and what you would not want to see adopted. And then we would do up a, uh, ordinance that would be introduced at the end of August, uh, following your directions with a vote in the end of September and then ten, uh, end of October, it would take effect.
Steve, I have two questions. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Um, have, and I was on the planning commission, uh, as I've mentioned before. And I'm curious as to, particularly with the five tightening, um, rules, have you or the planning commission or anyone reached out to the stakeholders that these things will affect? Um, and has it been considered the cost implications for some of these, particularly like parking lot stripes? Um, is there, has there been cost implications or a cost analysis as to some of the tightening of these regulations?
We have not reached out to stakeholders that would be like, reaching out to everybody who has a parking lot in the city of Eggers Town. We just can't do that. Uh, but keep in mind that a site plan is supposed to be in place until another site plan replaces it. And you're supposed to maintain a property in accordance with a site plan. So what this is, technically, we, a lot of this, unless it's a property that doesn't have an existing site plan, um, a lot of this could be enforced now. If somebody like, um, if, we have a shopping center that's, say, fifteen years old and they haven't restripped it in fifteen years and their striping has disappeared, we can say, look, your site, site plan says, this is what your parking lot's supposed to look like. You need to update your striping. This is routine maintenance stuff, for the most part.
The tightening, the five tightening things is routine maintenance stuff?
Um, I'd have to look at the individual ones, uh, to address individual questions. But the short answer is, do we reach out to stakeholders about particular items? The answer is no.
Okay, and the cost implications for especially these five tightened rules, has that been evaluated?
Typically, we don't do, um, cost, uh, cost analysis on these kinds of things. Any other questions?
I don't, I just wanted to, I know that, I remember this came back up at twenty-twenty-two, um, in the camper thing. And then we, uh, didn't, I think we did approve or something without this, and the, with the camper, right?
What ended up happening was that entire package was adopted except for that entire pa, section, that entire proposal was pulled out. So the rest of the package was adopted, that was pulled out at your all's direction. And we moved forward with everything else, cause nobody else had any, nobody had any concerns about the other items, so.
When this gets voted on, is this voted on as a whole package? Because I'm hearing a few things that are gonna be contentious. Or do we vote on each of the sixteen things individually?
Well, this will come back to a work session.
It'll come back to a work session.
This will come back to a, and then you have shot there. So hopefully by the time the vote comes, you already know what's been pulled, so that you can vote on as a package.
You'll, you'll give us direction. Okay, Steve, put together an ordinance for one through five, seven to whatever.
Perfect.
And lead out X and Y. And that's what we'll do based upon.
This is more, this again is more just, this is what the planning commission recommends. This is free all's information. They'll go to public hearing, then they'll come back to you all and say, here's plan, you got the planning commission, here's what the public said. Now, go ahead.
I heard some concerns around the way that it's done, and I don't know what that means, um, for the city, but I'd be more than willing to sit with, and kinda talk about how it's done with the planning commission. I heard council member Carini's, um, concerns about, you know, um, how it was done. And I don't know what that means to change it, but if we could talk about it offline and then maybe.
If this body was to make a lot of changes before it even went to the hearing, then it's no longer the planning commission's recommendation.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I just don't want anybody to feel like they've not heard. Um, and I also don't want the staff to feel attacked. I said, I don't want, I don't want any of us to not feel heard, but I also don't want the staff to feel like they're being attacked. Makes, makes everything uncomfortable. I think I'm at.
You're at seven.
Follow-up to public hearing, A dash two zero two four dash zero three, annexation of forty-five West Oak Ridge Drive. And it is, it's Joanna Wu, our planner.
Awesome.
I have to, you know, I have to explain all these things.
All right, really quickly, um, we had the public hearing on, um, June eighteenth and for the annexation of forty-five West Oak Ridge Drive. And, and we also had, um, the annexation plan approved on April twenty-third as well as the resolution introduced. And to recap, the, um, property owner entered into an annexation agreement and building one was, um, annexed into the city not too long ago. And instead of waiting till December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four, the property owner, uh, sent a letter to staff requesting that we expedite this process. Um, we're proposing IMU zoning and, um, it is com, it is similar, it is substantially, uh, similar to what is proposed in the county. And at the hearing, um, no one spoke for or against. And during the ten-day, uh, open period for public comment, we did not receive any comments. And so if you are all comfortable, um, this is on your agenda for, in a couple minutes for the special session to approve the resolution.
We good?
Yeah.
Thank you. Retail electric rate, M D P S C case number nine-seven-four-four. We got Nancy, our director of utilities, Nathan, our direct, deputy director of electric operations. Mr. Jacob Thomas, GDS and Associates, Inc. Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello, Nancy. Nancy, there's a chair for you.
All right, thank you for having us this evening. Um, just here to, kinda like to update you on the, uh, the rate case with the Maryland Public Service Commission, uh, on June thirteenth. Uh, we did file application with the commission. Uh, the application recommends a approximately two-point-three million dollar increase, uh, in electric retail rates. Uh, that's a total eight-point-seven percent, um, revenue increase for, for the light department, for operating and capital improvements. Of course, as you remember, it's been nineteen years since our last filing. Uh, this, the commission suspended our application for a period of one-hundred-eighty days from August first, twenty-twenty-four, uh, to provide them the opportunity to review and approve the, uh, the filing and, and give us final approval for our, our rates. Um, with the recommendations, uh, a one-thousand-dollar, or one-thousand kilowatt-hour bill for residential customer will increase from roughly eighty-nine dollars to ninety-six dollars and a quarter. Um, that's still roughly about twenty bucks less than a Potomac Edison customer. With us this evening is Jake Thomas with the GDS and Associates, who helped build our, our case, uh, providing the cost of service and rate, rate design. And he'll, uh, he'll go through and pinpoint some of the, uh, the bullet points of our filing.
Can I ask you real quick?
Yes.
Is it typical for the commission to suspend for six months in a situation like this? Is that, is that their normal practice?
Yeah.
That's not a red flag?
No.
No. They want lots of time to look at all the details. Well, thank, thank, thank you all. Thank y'all. I'm from Georgia, so thank y'all for having me.
Welcome.
Thank you. And we will, uh, we'll, we'll just kinda move through a few slides. I'm sorry, some of the numbers on here might be small, but, uh, they're in print for you there, too. Um, and I believe, um, I intended virtually to, to give you an overview of the process a few months ago. Um, and so these first couple of slides is just a little bit of an overview of the process that we go through, um, very similar to water, wastewater rate design, and I've been going through that here recently as well. It, it's basically a, a three-step process that you work through to get to your, your rate recommendations. And step one there is the revenue requirements. And so that's where we're trying to identify the total revenue that the utility needs to meet its financial objectives. And we're not worried at this step about how we're gonna collect that revenue and from whom. Just how much do we need? And, um, the way that you would do that in a regulated case can be very different from, uh, if we were not regulated by a public service commission. We can look at budgets and projections and things like that. With the commission oversight, you have to start with a historical test year and then make what are known as known and measurable adjustments to that test year. So you have to be able to defend anything that you put in there that you wanna show as, you know, a cost increase that we wanna try to recover through our rates. The second step is the cost of service analysis itself. And what we're doing there is we're actually just trying to figure out, what does it cost us to serve, say, a residential customer versus a, a small commercial or even a, you know, a very big industrial type of facility? They all use the electric grid in different ways. They use power differently and therefore they drive the cost the utility incurs differently. And that's what we're trying to do with the cost of service analysis. And then the final step, you can take the revenue requirements, the cost of service information, and you can design rates where you're trying to be, you know, fair and equitable, make sure that you recover your costs fairly. You're trying to manage things like rate shock. Um, if we increase somebody too much, then, you know, that might be an issue. But we wanna make sure we collect the right amount of revenue. So those are the steps that we have gone through and all of that has now been filed with the commission. And that's what they're gonna be, um, you know, digging into, looking at all our details. They've already started to serve discovery on us that we're having to respond to. Um, so the process is underway. As Nathan said, um, it's, it's been roughly twenty years since the last rate increase. Um, and so we've been trying to manage costs through, um, cost control and delaying and canceling investment in the distribution system itself. Um, and so, you know, it's, it's basically time to start making sure that we can reinvest. So I'll hit the highlights of the filing and also just keep in mind as part of this, this regulatory process, what you have here is what life department has requested of the public service commission. It'll be, you know, it'll be an actual process. There are intervenors. There's the office of the people's council who represents, um, residential ratepayers in Maryland. There's the, the commission itself, who represents both utilities and ratepayers. Um, and so it, it's a process whereby the commission's gonna end up adopting something. I, I'm not sure I've ever seen any kind of regulated case where the utility gets everything they asked for. So what we have here is what we've asked for. We won't know the actual answer until it could be end of the year, when the case is finally settled. Okay, so in step one, the revenue requirements, um, essentially what you do is you add up all of the operating expenses. Um, there is an element that's called a, a rate of return on rate base. Even though we are, you know, not a for-profit utility like Potomac Edison, we don't have shareholders in the electric utility. The city owns and operates the, the electric system. They still, the, the commission still uses a rate of return approach, um, to figure out a level of, of margin that we can earn to generate the cash that we need to reinvest in the system or for emergencies or things like that. So we calculate all that out. As I, as I mentioned in the chart there, you'll see, um, a test year and then an adjustment and then an adjusted test year. So that, that far right column in the little table there, column E, is really the, kinda the answer after we've made the adjustments that we wanna defend. Um, and at the very bottom there, you can see that basically we're asking for a two-point-four million dollar increase, uh, which equates to about an eight-point-seven percent increase in overall revenue. The adjustments column that you see there, just to give you an idea, on the next page is kinda some of the types of adjustments that we've looked at. We looked at increased, um, costs associated with invoicing and producing billing, uh, wage and salary adjustments and the associated, you know, payroll overhead costs that go along with that. Um, you are allowed to claim rate case expenses, so paying GDS to do this study and paying the attorneys to help represent you as part of those costs that can be recovered. We also have the plan to roll out advanced metering infrastructure, um, you know, new meters that can do hourly meter reading. And so we've got a portion of that in there and that changes that rate base, which is the amount of plant that we have invested. And then also, um, there's a, there's a little chunk of dollars associated with some lost revenue that we expect to happen through a special service agreement.
Do we wanna do questions along as we go or at the end?
I mean, how do you feel?
Either way, I'm, I'm fine taking questions as we go.
I'm just curious, having not reviewed something like this before. So there's zero dollars for customer service. There's zero dollars for interest on debt. There's zero dollars on non-operated income. And I thought that the whole city's work. We buy the power and then we transmit it to the customers. And there's zero dollars on transmission, operation, and maintenance.
Sure, yeah, I, I can hit on a few of those for you. So the purchase power cost, line one, um, is, is what we purchased. And we actually purchased transmission service as well, so we don't own an operative transmission system. We own an operative distribution system. And so we don't have any O and M costs associated with that. Um, the, any, anything related to, um, customer service is actually all captured in line five, customer accounts. And so there, you know, there are.
So all those zeros, are there someplace else that?
Essentially, yes, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, sure. Oh, sure, yeah. Nancy just reminded me, just to, to, to remind you that the, the historical test year was fiscal year twenty-three. So that's what column C represents.
Thank you.
Any questions on the adjustment slide? Okay. The, the next slide shows, um, the calculation of the rate base and the rate of return on the rate base. It's included in our revenue requirement. And so what rate base re- represents is the amount of money that you have invested in the distribution system itself, um, less accumulated depreciation, and then plus what's called working capital. So there, you know, it takes a little bit of cash in order to operate the system. Um, you know, there's a lead lag between when you incur power costs, power supply expenses versus when you recover it, for instance. And so there's some cash working capital in there. Um, this is pretty standard in the industry approach to how we do it. And so, of course, this is what the commission's gonna look at as well, the public service commission. Uh, you'll notice on row fourteen, a four-point-seven-eight percent. And so what we have put into the case is a rate of return of four-point-seven-eight percent. And what it represents is it's a, it's actually a treasury bond rate as of April thirtieth. Um, and that's an approach the commission has used with municipalities in the past. So we're trying to do something close to what we think would get approved. You know, uh, again, Potomac Edison, a investor-owned utility, they're gonna ask for a much higher return on equity because they wanna be able to pay their, their stockholders. And then you get into arguments about things like discounted cash flow and capital asset pricing and all this kinda stuff to determine the appropriate level of return. But for municipalities, they just basically use a, their, their theory is we'll use a, a risk. But for municipalities, they just basically use a, their, their theory is we'll use a, a risk-free investment, if you will, of four point seven eight percent. And so that produces eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars of that two million that we're asking for, two point four million. Okay, so those are the overall revenue requirements. And I know I hit all that very quickly, so feel free to ask any questions if you have any. As I mentioned, the cost, the cost of service process is where we then try to figure out, you know, what are we earning from our different customer classes? And so we go through a process of taking all of those costs that we just talked about that are really booked at the utility level, and we allocate them to the different customer classes based on the activity that might drive the costs. So when we purchase power costs, there's obviously the amount of energy that we have to purchase would increase the amount of purchased power costs. So we allocate those to our customers based on energy. But we also have a lot of costs that are driven by the peak demand that a customer might set on the system. And so we would allocate based on the demand, or there's even costs, for instance, setting and maintaining a meter that is just by being a customer, we have to set that meter, we have to own and operate it. And so that's a customer-related cost. We go through, we allocate all that out, and then we can compare those costs to each of the classes relative to the current revenues that we're earning. And so that's what this bar chart shows you. It shows you that for the total system, the, the percentage represents how much revenue we're getting versus our costs. And so the residential class, for instance, shows ninety point five percent. That means that there's, there's almost a ten percent shortfall between the revenue that we're earning from residential right now and what it actually costs to serve residential customers based on that cost of service analysis. And you'll see that all of these are actually fairly consistent. The one that sticks out is the outdoor lighting class. And part of what's going on there is I think even twenty years ago, we did not change the rates on the outdoor lighting. So it's been well over twenty years. I'm not sure.
I believe it was nineteen ninety-six.
There we go.
Was the last time they touched it.
Okay. And so that's, that's an indication that they are not paying their fair share, is one way to think about that, those, those outdoor lights. And so then on the next tab, we can take that information and come up with a recommendation of how we want to spread the overall eight point seven percent rate increase across the different classes of customers. And so what we have filed with the case, the recommendation is essentially that the outdoor lighting would get double that to help cut into some of the, the undercut recovery there, so it's seventeen point four percent. Most of the other classes are at the eight point seven. You'll notice that the industrial low and high are a little bit different from that. I'll get into that in a minute. But essentially, we're, we're largely recommending a consistent rate increase across all the different customer classes. Okay, and so now the rates that get us to that answer. We'll, we'll start with and predominantly talk about the residential rate class. One thing that we have recommended is adding an actual customer charge to the rate. The current residential rate has a minimum charge of four dollars and eleven cents. So that means that somebody that uses zero would pay four dollars and eleven a cent, but somebody that pay, you know, uses a thousand kilowatt hours would just be the thousand kilowatt hours times the energy charge. We're recommending we go to a five dollar fixed charge for every residential bill. And so that thousand kilowatt hour customer would pay five dollars plus the new energy charge times a thousand kilowatt hours. And so it's, it's a little step that'll help stabilize revenue just a little bit. It helps us get a little bit more fixed cost recovery out of the rate. But it's not such a big move. We think that the, the commission will be okay with this. I can tell you that, again, Potomac Edison's, I think they did a case last year, and they moved up to just over six dollars on their customer charge. I think it was approved last year. And you can see there on that slide, the cost of service, one of the things the cost of service also tells us is we're actually able to calculate things like the cost, the customer-related cost for residential is about six dollars per customer per month. So on a cost basis, it's a little over six dollars. We're, we're recommending a charge of five dollars.
That's like the minimum charge?
Yes.
So we're gonna lose a dollar, five cents?
It'll be recovered through the energy charges. So the revenue will be the same. What it means is that our lower-use customers will be paying a little bit less than their actual cost, and our high-use customers will be picking up that difference.
This is all residential?
That's right. This is just residential. And, and again, this is what has been requested in the case. The final answer is going to be several months out still, because the, you know, we could get negotiating on these elements, too, with the, with the intervenors and the commission. So the next slide actually shows the residential rate there. And so we show the various elements of the rate. There's the test year, the adjusted test year, and then our proposal. One of the other things that we are, we have proposed, you have the purchase power cost adjustment factor, which is a, it's a factor designed to help flow through fluctuations in our power cost and recover those costs more quickly. The way it's designed today is there's actually a portion of those power costs that are recovered through our current energy char, our actual base energy charge itself. And you can see that there. There's a line that says power cost base, and it's four point four four three cents per kilowatt hour. So the current energy charge rate recovers that much of the power cost. And we're kind of getting down into the weeds, and I apologize, but I want to make sure we kind of understand what we proposed a little bit.
And that's eliminated because you're proposing a customer charge?
Well, we're also actually increasing the PPCA to recover that as well. You can see that line item. So, so the, the net effect is zero on the bills, but it's just going to show up as a higher PPCA portion of the bill and a lower energy charge portion of the bill. And that's another thing that our attorneys recommended we do as, as part of a way to help negotiate with the commission. They, they've apparently been encouraging other utilities to move that direction. And so that will, you know, essentially what that'll show is that PPCA portion of the bill will actually show now, here's the total cost of the power that we, we turn around and sell to you. It's what it cost us, sent, sent by sent. You can see at the bottom there, three different bill examples for residential, five hundred kilowatt hours, a thousand and fifteen hundred. And then the, the proposed increase is really the proposed versus the adjusted test year. But if you look at slide fifteen, it might be a little bit more instructive because we also bring in Potomac Edison and more different usage levels. And so what this chart shows is, over there on column A, is for a residential bill, still on residential, at different usage levels between zero and two thousand. Column B shows the revised, so that is, I should actually say present, I believe. I'll have to check that out. That's the present rate. Then you have the proposed rate on column D. And what the difference is there, I know why it says revised, because we're reflecting the new piece, a new PPCA based on our current power contract. That's what it is. So at a thousand kilowatt hours, which is highlighted in gray there, right, the, a bill today would be eighty-nine oh six based on our estimate of the new power costs from the new contract. We're proposing it would go to ninety-six twenty-five based on all those differences that we've talked about and the eight point seven percent increase. And then you can see in column F, the dollar difference, and then G is the percent difference. So a one thousand kilowatt hour customer would actually see an eight point one percent increase. And then column H is the current Potomac Edison residential rate. And then J is the difference between our proposal and Potomac Edison. And so you can, you can see consistently, even under our proposal, which, again, it's likely we're not going to get it all, we're going to be twenty-two percent below the investor-owned utility.
You use a thousand kilowatt hours as the example because is that like a typical house?
It's, yeah, that's about typical.
Industry standard for typical?
Yeah, I mean, it varies depending on region and how much air conditioning is in your area, but it's, it's a pretty good rule of thumb.
No base portal.
Yeah, electric base portal. Okay, on the non-residential side, I don't have a, a ton of detail on each of the other classes, but here's some of the things that we have done and recommended and put into our case. Just like in residential, we've, we've gone from a minimum charge to a fixed, an actual customer charge in each of those, commercial and industrial. We are, have recommended eliminating the declining block energy charges and gone to a flat energy charge. And then you currently have two different industrial rates. Rate nine is a light and power service, low load factor, and rate ten is light and power service, high load factor. GDS took a look at those. We, we didn't really see a clear difference in how those customers are using power or the cost to serve those customers. So we've actually recommended just combining that back into one, one rate. And so that is actually why, back on the pie chart, if you recall, one of the groups saw a little bit higher than the eight percent increase, and one was a little bit lower. And that's just a natural occurrence because we've combined that into one class in our recommendation. And then, so this, this is what the general and commercial service would look like, and then that light and power service center combined. And so you can see, for instance, the demand charges have not changed significantly. We are proposing to add a customer charge, but then you can see, for instance, kind of three quarters of the way down the page where it says distribution component under, under energy charges, first seven hundred over seven hundred, the present rate shows the over seven hundred being less expensive per kilowatt hour than the first seven hundred, and we're proposing to just make it a flat energy charge. And the PPCA would work the same for our commercial and industrial customers.
So commercial is cheaper? So that's just the PPCA?
The PPCA is the same under both. Let's see. So residential, the total is nine, one, two, five.
That's residential.
Yep. And then you would have to take the seven oh eight six plus the one six six two on the general and commercial. So that would be eight, seven.
Zero point zero eight seven.
So yes, they are cheaper on a per kilowatt hour basis, but they do have a demand charge, which the residential does not.
And the higher customer charge.
And the higher customer charge, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Time for questions again?
Sure.
So in almost the same breath, you mentioned that we have, the city hasn't raised the rate almost twenty years. And then you referred to rate shock.
Right.
Is twenty years a good idea? I mean, I know you have to go through the Public Service Commission, and there's a process. And you probably don't want to do that every year.
Twenty-eight years.
But what is the sweet spot?
So I, um, most non-regulated utilities, I recommend three to five years, and that's probably a good...
Wow. Well, here's, it's, it's extremely expensive. One, one of the arguments that we've had over the twenty years of no rate increases is that it's extremely expensive to go to the Public Service Commission to do this. Lawyers, we love paying him, but we still have to pay him, which is, was one of the reasons why it was always a look at cost reduction, no staff increases, staff pay stayed very minimal. That was the reason. As we have seen with other rate issues we have here, we're not in a world where we can do that anymore. Three to five years has got to be where the sweet spot to it.
So I would say, based on that recommendation, the standard or whatever, that without talking about going to the Public Service Commission, can always run through this process to see what it would be if it was an ask.
Right, no, right.
And then make the determination.
And then if it's, then if we want to go the additional route, then we're only paying for the rate study. We're not paying for all the other, because there is such a bureaucracy in the Public Service Commission.
And because I can count by five in my head, so this is for twenty-five, right?
Right.
So do thirty, thirty-five, forty, forty-five.
If you wanted to wait five, yeah, if we did it every five years, I, I think that's too long.
I have, well, that's true. Good day. I have a theoretical question, since you're here. You're all the way up from Georgia. So first of all, just to make sure I have my assumptions right, all of the customers for City Light are within the city limit boundaries?
No, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's also a smaller boundary.
Yeah, there are city customers, there are city residents that are not our customers.
Okay. So you don't know the, oh, actually, I have a quick question for you. Who is the outdoor lights customer? Is that like the street department that has all the street lights?
No, that's the streetlights rate. This outdoor light customer is a residential customer or a commercial customer who has a dusted dawn light over their parking lot or whatever.
So private, uh...
Right, and, and we don't, we really don't do that anymore. That, I believe there's a clause in that, in that tariff language that, that, that rate is grandfathered. And has, and we're trying to remove them from the system.
It's a nightmare to build.
Because there's, there's poles, there's poles and wire and...
They're going to get a flat fee, but that's another discussion. Okay, so here's my theoretical question. So we spend a lot of time, and we're going to spend more time, talking about water rates. And one of the issues with water, because our water system serves customers, and we actually literally call them inside customers and outside customers. But really, they're not. That's not the best definition. The best definition is, what I'll refer by words, full faith and credit customers and non-full faith and credit customers. In other words, full faith and credit, when the city goes to issue bonds, you know, it's based on the full faith and credit of the city, which is based on the full faith and credit on all the people that pay taxes to the city, property taxes to the city. And so those citizens are the ones that are propping up and, and creating the base for our full faith and credit. And we're just are going through the bond process right now. So when I look at water, which I know this is not water, but when I look at water, I look at that in that, in my head, that's how I see the different, difference between what we refer to as inside and outside. So all of these are inside, but do we have the same in the, for the, for the electric system, which is also an enterprise fund, do we have the same need for leaning on the full faith and credit of the city when we're determining what the rate should be and how we, you know, issue bonds and come up with the revenues to do projects? Or is it all cash?
It's all cash.
So let me just, so typically, if you look at his budget, the electric fund is very little bond funding source. Most all the time it's cash. There are times, recently, was a roof project where we will bond finance. Anytime we bond finance and any fund across the city, to go through that process, it is backed by the full faith and credits.
Which are, by definition, the taxpayers.
Correct.
Okay, got it. So when you talked about, early on, you talked about looking at the, the revenues, I guess. You, you were, you were describing a rate, kind of a return on investment.
Yes.
That, as you said, a private company, a for-profit company like First Energy would pay for, you know, stockholders and whatever profit. So we don't have that, but you said they allow a certain amount of that. That's, that's the number I was trying to look at.
Yeah, slide... Yeah, it's the four point seven, right.
Yes, so, given that answer to my question, that we, we use cash for, as you mentioned earlier, the repairs, the emergencies, the expansion. I mean, I know it's not growing because it's a fixed boundary. I understand that. But, you know, we're always buying more transformers. We're always buying, you know, replacing lines. Every month on our, you know, voting session, there's a whole section under, you know, utilities, that's all the stuff that we're buying. And all of those costs are going up substantially, especially right now. Maybe things will change over the next couple of years, but right now, the cost of everything is going up. is going up.
Yes.
I don't want to say exponentially, but it's almost that bad. So where do we derive, if we're not going out and getting bond money and we're using all cash, where in this whole process are we deriving the funds that we're going to need tomorrow that we don't need today? Or we haven't been able to show that we've been spending today? I'm trying to do a kind of forward-looking, you know, if, if everything we buy costs fifty percent more next year than it did this year, where do these rates adjust for that or account for that? That's my general theoretical question.
Sure. So, a portion of it is in, in those known and measurable changes. Fortunately, that means that we've got to have some kind of a basis, so, um, that's part of it, that return is the other big part of it, because that's really essentially just generating additional cash, right, that you're putting into the revenue requirements?
Yeah.
Is it enough? I don't know. You know, that, that might be why you need to have another case before twenty years out.
I would agree with that.
You're going to be cash limited, especially if we're not going to try to debt finance any investment in the, in the electric system. So, so that's a portion of it. Some of our adjustments, we actually, by reflecting the rollout of the AMI program, we actually bumped up the amount of plant that we calculated that return on. So that's another element where we were trying to get a little extra out of it. You can see, for instance, on the slide that I have on the screen, it's a little, does this even work?
We got to hear.
Okay. That, that column D, you can see we added six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of investment into the plant. And that's representing additional investment we expect to make. And then we're, we're saying we deserve to earn that four point seven eight percent return on that as well. So that's another, another place where we tried to get some of that out.
And you had said that that's because that's what others have advised you and us, that that's what the Public Service Commission would probably be comfortable with. Is that a, I guess that's a thirty-year treasury bond?
It is.
It's a, I mean, because a longer, a shorter term bond would be higher than that.
That's correct. And that's as of a date certain. And in fact, we know from the experience of City of Easton in particular, has recently gone through a case, but I think Thermon's was similar as well. So we've, we've done some case review and talked to the attorneys. And in both of those cases, what the, what the commission staff actually recommended was a T-bill at a date certain plus a forward look coming from a source of data that we just actually don't have. So we've gone with a date certain.
Sure.
And we expect them to come back, and they're probably going to actually recommend something a little bit lower than four, seven, eight, to be honest with you. Just have to see.
I mean, I ask all that just because it seems to me that, for a long time, things were predictable. And now they're not. At least it seems that way.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, you know, just to help give some context, we've seen nationwide electricity rates, you know, raised by anywhere between seventeen and twenty percent over the last three years. That's nationwide average cost of electricity. So everybody's raising rates. No, eight, eight, seven is, yeah.
And if the mayor council would want to, what we do with the water and wastewater is, we have the new gen vat rate consultant we use for water and wastewater, they update the model annually with the audited numbers. So it allows us to, when we're preparing the budget, it allows us to look at what projected revenue would be, but it also gives us the opportunity that if we would need to come back and make an adjustment, that data is updated. And that's certainly something annually. We don't adjust the rates annually, as you well know, but we look at the audited numbers annually in the rate model. And that's certainly something, if you wanted to, we could do is keep the model, if you will, current so that we can better predict or project what we need each year in the operating budget and know when it's time to, you know, how much, how much pain we can incur financially and know when it's time to go back for that rate trace. Because maybe it's at year two, we need, we're looking at, okay, we need, we need the year three be before the Public Service Commission, or we're good for another year. So that's something that we could bring back to the mayor council for approval.
Sure.
Seems very helpful.
With the model.
I mean, I'd personally love to see that. I mean, I'd like to see us on all the utility fronts, be on a more regular review so we're not such large gaps between increases. It really puts a strain.
So no disrespect, I don't know how much we pay you, but I would want to make sure that that fee and the, the choose is worth the squeeze, but I think it's a good idea.
And you have to understand, those of us that have been here quite a while, that was, that was pretty much how we operated, was the main goal was to control costs. We have controlled costs, we have, good old West Virginia term, we have squeezed the blood out of that turnip to the point where there's no blood left. So, you never heard of that one? Now you know.
The Georgia kid has.
Squeezing the blood out of the turnip.
Yeah.
So, so that's why, that's why we have to go this route, we have to do it more regularly so that we don't start paralyzing people with these huge.
Massive increases.
Not that this again is a huge increase, but it's an increase nonetheless.
Especially in the same, especially in the same year.
Yeah.
You know, we've been talking about.
We're playing catch-up on everything.
We love our rate studies this year, so we, yeah.
So how does this work if there are things that are out of our control? The big, huge numbers of this report are out of our control, the cost of the power, and apparently we pay somebody to do the distribution or transmission, right?
That's right. That's part of your cost of your power.
It's the cost of the power.
Yes.
I mean, we do the distribution.
That's right.
But we're paying for power, the generation, and the transmission.
That's correct.
That is not in our control. I mean, we can bid it, we can get prices, but, you know, if, if the cost of power doubles tomorrow, what can we do?
But we have the purchase power cost adjusted.
Our power is different.
Covers that.
Yeah.
Doesn't really have.
Yeah.
And our ability to pass that through on an annual basis, does that change?
Well, we do have it.
Right.
Yeah, that is.
Because purchase power is different.
Okay.
That's.
That's good.
Yeah.
I don't think he's done.
The, I'll be very fast. The, the seven, eight, six is the, the PPCA is the, we're covering the purchase power cost. Okay. We've, we've kind of already touched on the process, so I don't know that I need to spend much time on these slides, but essentially, we have filed that rate case. We actually have our pre-hearing conference tomorrow morning with the judge, where the schedule will get finalized, but as Nathan told you, there's already been the hundred and eighty day delay, and so we're looking at, we hope to have.
Early as February one.
An answer in January is what we're, what it's looking like. So it's not only is it expensive, it takes a long time, and it's kind of an unfortunate artifact of, of being regulated.
And round numbers, it takes a year.
Essentially. And now I'm finished, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
He does anymore?
Very, very helpful.
Safe travels.
Thanks so much, yes.
Good luck tomorrow.
I forgot, Jason. Settlement agreement with the Berry entities versus the City of Hagerstown. Jason Morton, our city attorney.
Good afternoon again.
Hi.
All right, so I'm, I'm here to present publicly a partial settlement agreement with respect to the declaratory judgment action that is pending with respect to the city's rental facilities ordinance. And we've discussed that in some detail in executive session, which is the appropriate, given that there were legal communications that were going on between me and, and my client, the city council. I will say this publicly with respect to the partial settlement agreement, that it has been vetted by your legal counsel, has been negotiated with plaintiff's counsel. And under the agreement, as with all agreements, you give a little, you get a little. What you're giving is there are seventeen pending district court municipal citation actions that are going to be dismissed. At the same time as, of this dismissal, the city is maintaining that the ordinance under which those municipal infractions were filed is still a valid ordinance, so we're not acknowledging any kind of weakness in the ordinance. And we're getting a little. And what are we getting? We're getting, one of the counts in the declaratory judgment action is going to be disposed of finally, so that there's no further litigation with respect to that particular item. So it's my recommendation as your legal counsel, that you approve this settlement agreement in the special session that's to occur momentarily. Any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you. Sorry I didn't bring any food.
Me too.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Aw, you've been back there for a while. I don't need a motion.
Special session.
Is there a motion required for special session?
No, I'm asking that right.
To go to a voting session.
Right.
Can I have a motion to go to a voting session?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Um, those opposed, if you're asking. Motion carries. Approval of the annexation resol, uh, resolution A dash two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, three, forty-five West Oak Ridge Drive.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and council approve the annexation resolution for annexation case number A dash two, zero, two, four, dash, zero, three, colon, forty-five West Oak Ridge Drive Lot Two of the JVA annexation agreement. The portion of the property to be annexed is approximately fifty-two acres in size and is intended to be added to and made part of the adjacent municipal lands with I dash MU zoning. The resolution package includes the annexation plat, zoning exhibit, and pre-annexation agreement.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of resolution, settlement agreement with the Berry entities to resolve some of the disputes in the pending declaratory judgment action.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and council's approval of a resolution to enter a settlement agreement with Berry entities to resolve some of the disputes in the pending declaratory judgment action. The parties intend to resolve any and all of their respective rights and obligations as to only one count, one count one of the amended complaint, and two, the pending district court municipal infractions by the attached settlement agreement.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. City Administrator.
A bunch of stuff happening, I'm not going to get out and through them all, but we've got story time in the plaza tomorrow with authentic community theater. Midweek music and market starts tomorrow with the Jill Fulton Band, that has been moved inside to the USMH banquet area across the street from University Plaza. That is six days, that is still happening, it's just been moved inside. Encounter Music Series, hosted by Valor Ministries at City Park tomorrow night. Food Truck Friday, hopefully we'll get a food truck there this time. We have had terrible luck with the food trucks and, and electronic difficulties and all kinds of stuff, so we're hoping Tucker's Pucker's there on, on Friday in Waram Alley. Outdoor movie in the park is Barbie, can't wait for that. Edie Bug, I'll be going there with you Friday, on Friday night. Christmas in July at City Park, Train Hub Municipal Band on seven fourteen. Again, it is a busy week. MML Conference, want to thank all of you for that support there. I actually participated in two workshops as a moderator and presenter. One was on, moderated the legislative session review, that was well attended. And then the second thing was pretty terrifying, being part of a Shark Tab style works, Shark Tank style workshop where several of us pitched up potential legislation to a group of legislators and the, the governor's legislative services director. Thank you guys for being there. Behind me, it was, as I said, terrifying. But it was good, we got a good, we got good feedback on, on ours and that, and mine dealt with annexation, and I think we've got some good things that are happening there. Three full days of meetings and workshops, the comptroller, lieutenant governor, governor, lieutenant governor was there every day. Haven't seen that. Got a lot of good time spent with her. And then the cabinet secretaries, almost all of the cabinet secretaries were there for some portion of that day. Got to speak to MDE on some issues we're having, and also Jake Day, talked to him with housing and, and community development. So again, the, the amount of face time and, and conversations we had were, this was by far the best conference I think I've ever been to, to be able to do that. Michelle and I were all day today with Moody's and S and P rating agencies presenting our opportunities for them to rate us when it comes to the bond issuance that we're doing, try to get a good rate. I think we were very well received, I think that Michelle and Brooke in the back for putting together that presentation, which was onerous, but they really seemed to appreciate the detail that we went into there. Two more things. Topping off ceremony on Friday at the Field House, the beam is, is, is set by the entrance on Memorial Boulevard to go sign. That will be, and, and then we will have the full style John Whack tailgate experience again, and it's, and I asked for it to be Friday afternoon so we could actually sit and enjoy it maybe for a little bit instead of having it before a council meeting. So that will be Friday, nice attendance coming, should be a good event. And then lastly, I want to end on a, on a down note, but we had, we were notified, it was in the paper, that Randy Catlett has passed away. Randy Catlett, I got to tell you, one of the most gentle human beings I think I have ever met. He was on the loan review board and has been on it since January nineteen ninety-two. So thirty-two years. Probably, I know he's the longest-serving we had, that we had currently. I think Bill Wright might have beat him out by a couple of years on the planning commission. But just send condolences to the Cowell family again. Pure class and just what a nice person Randy was, and I'm glad I got to know him a little bit, and condolences to his family. That's it for me, thank you. Oh, one more thing. MML Legislative Committee, got reappointed to that this, this year. I am just a member, thank God, I'm not the chair. And you will have an additional announcement on that coming up in a couple minutes? That's it.
Councilwoman McIntyre.
So, after the discussion with the health department and coupled with my recent incidents that I've experienced, I feel compelled to reiterate my frustrations from this seat. Because there are frustrations that, and experiences that are shared by many that live and work in downtown. And I have to also admit that, as you know, AI is one of my favorite things, and this has helped me organize my thoughts. So I'm going to read it. "Just in the past week, I experienced a series of unsettling incidents, dangerous trespassing, vandalism, and theft right in my front yard. Open-air drug markets have become a disturbing norm, and the number of encamped unhoused individuals increase, is increasing every day right outside of these walls. These aren't isolated incidents. If nothing's done, all of Hagerstown's efforts at revitalization will have been in vain. Our community deserves better, and it's time for us, City Hall, to rise to the occasion and make changes to the, the way things are always done. It's critical for us to address not just the symptoms, but like was said tonight, the root causes of these problems. At the center of the homelessness epidemic is the unaffordability of housing. We must focus heavily on encouraging affordable housing and affordable development. We have to eliminate barriers to the production of affordable housing for all citizens. I've sent all of you articles from the National League of Cities and homeless coalitions that indicate this Berry thing. Again, as we discussed tonight, the city must address the leadership void among our social service organizations. The resources, ideas, and talent are absolutely here within our community, but the city must play a much more active role in directing those to where they are needed most. Flat out, we need safe and accessible shelters to support the unhoused population. We, City Hall, must prioritize these urgent issues, and we as a community need to remain vigilant and proactive in pushing for meaningful and lasting change. It's time for a paradigm shift, just like was said tonight. It's time for a paradigm shift, just like was said tonight. We cannot continue to do things the same way and expect different results. We're out of time and our city's future depends on us making the tough decisions and big changes now. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brine?
Well, I, I was, was gonna say I didn't have any comments, but I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Councilwoman McIntyre for speaking tooth to power, especially since she's part of the power and we, I, I concur that there's, there's needs to be a paradigm shift. Good words. So thank you. And following up on the county, the city administrator's comments, it, it was an amazing Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference and everybody that went, I think, had a wonderful experience and is better for it. And, as he mentioned, I too was appointed to the MML Legislative Committee, which is not a huge committee, so having two members from Hagerstown, I think is pretty significant. And so we're gonna tag team them.
You can actually talk this time.
I can talk this time. We're gonna tag team them. So appreciate the, the MML leadership's faith in, in both of us. And, and finally, I'll just mention, because I too mourn the loss of my friend Randy Catlett. Randy was my mechanic and for every five minutes we spent talking about the car, we spent an hour talking about politics and government and everything else that's going on in the world. And he was an amazing guy and he will be missed. So thank you for that recognition, Scott.
Councilwoman Brenna?
So first apologize, my voice is gone. So couldn't hear me tonight, I'm so sorry. But Councilwoman McIntyre, thank you for that. It's been many times we've had conversations amongst each other, amongst this body, and it's, it's time for actions. We so, we're so reactive, when something is posted online, we're like, okay, what do we do? And then it kinda just falls off the table. So I totally agree with what you're saying, it's time to, to really get our butts in gear. MML, it was great spending time with my colleagues and I wanna give a special shout out to Peter and Brittany, or Mindy, or Mindy for making those shirts for us, because we did look like Power Rangers, so all city staff had the shirts on, it was really cool to see. And it was also good learning about other municipalities and their challenges and successes. And Caribbean Fest was this past weekend, just wanna say good job to Vibes and Tribe for their second event. It was a hot day, but it was still a lot of people outside. And Ruth Ann Monroe Summer Basketball League is starting July twenty-eighth at Ween Park again, so I wanna give a advanced thank you to the city for always partnering with us. And player registration is July twenty-first, so we're expecting about two hundred kids again, so please get to the park July twenty-first to register your kids. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Schindler?
First off, I'll say congratulations to Councilmember Briney. Good news. I did want to say something about the, the Child Ibsy Center, the Safe Place that came in tonight, that, that's always gonna be very near and dear to me. I served as the president for their nonprofit, Friends of Safe Place, for, for a good while. And, and one thing I hope that everybody takes away that, that watched this meeting tonight is not all communities have something like we have. The, the Safe Place to kinda just, I used to tell a lot of people this, and I'll say the same thing tonight, is it's just one spot where these, you know, youth that have been through so much can go and not be drug to the court system and to the police department and to the therapists and to social services. It's, it's one facility where they can get all their services in one spot. So it's very valuable and I'm very grateful that it's here. And I had a little something written here, but I will not be as eloquent to tackle that problem head-on, is exactly what you said, is, is the creation of additional affordable and workplace housing and removing barriers to creating additional housing. So we have our work cut out for us and we really need to dive in. Thank you.
Yeah, I will, I'm gonna start there, because I agree. This is what we've gotten to and what it, what I see in my walks in the morning, not just downtown. My neighborhood, multiple car break-ins, multiple things where people are completely just feeling violated. I wanna thank HPD for each and every time that I ask that we go out and we stop by and we talk to, you know, the community there. I thank them for, for being available to do that. But I agree, you know, to hear how many shootings that have happened within community is unsettling. It's very unsettling. And so I just, I don't know what the solution is, but I feel as though we here can work together. Safety is, should be number one, always has to be number one. I'm sorry those things happen to you as an elected member that sits here and serves the way that you do, to feel violated in that way. And my church is right there. And so, I mean, we're all feeling it and we, we do, we have to do something. And the time is now, the time has been. So yeah, thank you for everyone's leadership. I'm gonna say congratulations to Survivor W Johnson Community Center. Uh, summer camp is underway. One week, my grandkids wasn't there, but they just started and I asked them how they, they like it. And Malani said, I love it, that's why I'm excited and can't wait to go. So it's been two days. It's Friday and Monday, but congratulations. I, the, the kids and the young people that are going there and the staff that's working there is enjoying it. And I hear they have Spencer, Spencer Jackson is, is program manager, so camp manager, so that's amazing. I wanna, so Ms. Marilyn, Ms. Marilyn Luncheon was right before we left for MML. And so I just wanna say congratulations to the new Ms. Marilyn and this teen Marilyn, Bailey Anne, and I believe it's Angie Anna. I might be saying that wrong, but congratulations to you, thank you for your representation and the hard work that you have to do in order to, you know, be a part of that whole committee. Also, thank you Maryland Theater and this city for hosting it for a very long time. It's really incredible. I'm gonna say, I agree, MML Summer Conference was this year was the best one to me. The, the workshops that were available as well as the speeches. Governor Moore's keynote speech was less about hyping you up and more about data and more about, you know, this is why I'm moving this way, or this is why this administration is doing this. I appreciated that he reiterated multiple times, data-driven but heart-led. Data-driven but heart-led. Also, he reiterated, you know, some of these things are not politics, actually none of it really should be, about politics, but the people. I appreciated my experience at MML, my last summer conference experience with you guys. Thank you Brittany and Peter, because we literally asked for that within, you know, I think they had probably twenty-four hours to get those T-shirts together. And I mean, that just speaks to the commitment sometimes to go the extra mile. And I appreciate staff, I appreciate staff for, you know, if asked of something and how they, they do that within just a short period of time. So thank you Councilwoman for leading that. Scott, you did an amazing job with your think tank. I would have never, was it think tank or Shark Tank?
Shark Tank.
Think tank.
Yeah, I called it that, too.
Yeah, the Shark Tank. I mean, I, I believe that the folks that went before you were kinda more, you know, witty and kinda had jokes and that may have made you feel as though you were, you know, but no, the, the facts were there. Your representation and your leadership was just incredible. You did an amazing job. Also, I watched the rest of the room. That was appreciative to hear, hear those things come out. So thank you, thank you for your leadership there. And I wanna say thank you to the Oliver Brothers and Mr. and Mrs. Fugate who came to Hagerstown. Three brothers, one flew from Las Vegas, other one came from Northern Virginia, one lives in Frederick. Mr. and Mrs. Fugate are Annapolis. And they came here to meet with the county staff as well as visit Hagerstown, Dan Spedit and myself about some partnerships and, and doing some things for young people, also some entertainment stuff. It was a very, very good meeting. Thank you Jonathan Horowitz. I just seen an email where they're already working together. It was just incredible. And then after we did that meeting, they actually hung out all day. We went to a baseball game. I got to show them all around the city. But then Mrs. Fugate and her daughters made me this beautiful bracelet, but she took her daughters to the Discovery Station while we had another meeting. I just thought that was incredible that they took the time to kinda learn things about our community, they really, really enjoyed it. I wanna say the ransom of Hagerstown was, uh, last week, right? Yeah, last week. Hundred and sixty years. I did, Brittany and myself was there, I did a certificate of recognition, I believe. And I got so choked up because when I was reading it, I read that the people of Hagerstown came together to save the town. And it was not about one person or one party or one type of people or one group of people being taken hostage or being, it was about our entire town, you know? And I mean, if that doesn't speak to the, to the importance and who we are and how, how, what an asset that we have to call this home, that it was taken for ransom and that the town came together. I, I mean, that is, that is an incredible story. I think that I'll tell it for the rest of my life, but a hundred and sixty years later, and I believe that we still have that same essence, that we can come together. I love the point where Hagerstown was shouted out, not a person, but Hagerstown. Hey, Hagerstown, hey. I mean, every time, it was hey, Hagerstown. That, that means a lot, especially for myself. It just means a lot that the entire town, you know, we're moving together and that we're in this together. I wanna say congratulations and happy retirement to Dr. Alexander. I got to meet with him in his new role, he's now with the governor's office, I believe he's the protect coordinator. But forty-nine years, eleven months and eleven days, I mean, come on, like, jeez, that's how much time he gave us. And so, just very, very appreciative.
HPD captain.
HPD? What did I say?
No, you said Dr. Alexander, I didn't, I didn't hear you say it.
Oh, HPD. Yeah, because he's no longer.
We don't have one of the doctors that are.
He's no longer captain, Alexander. He made that very clear.
He is now Dr. Alexander, he makes that very clear.
So Hagerstown Police Department. And it was really cool to hear him and to say he didn't know what he would do if he would've just retired and not retired into something that he still is able to work with HPD. His office is still at HPD, so just, he's just got a different badge on and a, and a suit shirt.
Smartest men on the planet.
Amazing. Incredible. I'm gonna say shout out and congratulations to Lowe's. And thank you to our fire marshal, fire chief, utilities, yourself, and the rest of the staff that worked together in order for Lowe's to be able to double in size and actually employ more people. They have what they call a board cutting, which was really, really cool. What never even cut it and they like, it was really cool. So congratulations. I wanna say congratulations to Mr. Ronnie Ha- Haat. Councilmember Schindler and Briney, myself and some staff were out at Duvernage today and he has been working for Duvernage for fifty-nine years. It's the only job he has had. He started there eighteen years old. He had a partial retirement, which means he only works about twenty hours a week now. But a lot of things that, from the spiral staircase, that just realizing that they are made here and that, you know, incredible, but to know that he has been there that long. And I mean, they celebrated him and I think that they're going to every year after that. And he said his plan is to get to seventy years and so, Mr. Ronnie Haat, I tried to get some of that commitment to rub off on me and hard work, we'll see. Thank you Special Secretary Martin from the Governor's Office for Children. I had a meeting with her and her staff today in reference to the grant that is coming out. I can't think of what it's called. Enough, the Enough Act. And I will also be sharing the slides with you guys and any of my notes that you wanna know. But I just think that the things that the governor's office and this administration is sending into our municipality is going to be incredible. I met with Department of Human Services, Department of Juvenile Services, and then as well as DC PCS, Correctional Services, about a different initiative, that they'll also be sending a housing, I mean, a navigator to help families be able to navigate through all the state services. And so I'm just very thankful for this current administration. One of the things he said, no one left behind doesn't mean everyone gets everything, but I am appreciative of the things that is data-driven that is sending them into our community. All right, it looks like that's it. Yes. And with that, we are adjourned. I think.
Can you get the Buckeye out?